Preeti?
Preeti.
Okay, you're next, and then Maddie Bear, our first three. So Denise, would you like to start?
Good evening, Board of Education.
I think so. Try one more time. Yes, there you go.
Good evening, Board of Education. Dr. Gaines and Community. My name is Denise Bear, and I'm a parent within the Melville School District. Cum laude, class ranking GPA. We have recently saturated ourselves with these words. Here's what we need to realize. It's our students, our children, for whom we desire the best. It's the desire to recognize all students fairly and equally in regard to their ability. It's the desire to leave no student behind, whether they are below or under the academic spectrum. The December 21st, 2016 call reports board members stating that they were, quote, "embarrassed by the district's math scores," unquote, because only 48 percent of our students were testing at proficient or advanced in math. This 48 percent is the same group of students that will soon be subjected to their academic recognition being lowered or lumped into a lesser ranking system. Tonight, I ask you to consider the balance between fairness and equality for all students of all academic needs. All students have different, all students are different, and deserve the recognition to which they have aspired. Recognizing students on different levels of academic status is realistic and by no means discriminatory. Please do not leave behind our high achieving, Melville School District's academic power source. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for being here. My name is Preeti Tamari, and I will be a senior attending Oakville High School this August. I am here today to respectfully add insight to the discussion about policy IKC. Before I begin, however, I would like to address the term GPA chaser, which has been used frequently in reference to the top students in the district. I personally cannot think of a time when I have chosen to take an advanced class solely due to the GPA boost. The main reasons I, as well as the majority of my peers, take advanced classes is to prepare for the difficulty of college and to surround ourselves with like-minded, goal-oriented students. The GPA boost is a relatively minuscule component of what is considered when scheduling classes. Applying this to the CAPS program, the reason why I and many of my peers declined to participate has nothing to do with GPA. We actually enjoy being in a traditional classroom setting, therefore, we look for opportunities outside of school to explore our career interests. Essentially, the class rank system is not at fault for the student enrollment of the CAPS program. Although I understand the rationale for the implementation of the cum laude system, I do not understand how it is either practical or fair to implement this policy specifically for the classes of 2018 and 2019. In regards to feasibility, school began in less than two months, and we still have no established system. Meanwhile, students of the class of 2018 have already begun looking through the Common Application and have even started applying for colleges. In the past, districts have switched to a cum laude, districts who have switched to a cum laude have taken up to one whole year to ensure smooth implementation. Our district's sense of urgency for implementation will be the source of error and confusion. In regards to fairness, this policy simply reflects the opposite. My peers and I have been under the class rank system for three years. However, the rules were suddenly changed without our consent. Students at Oakville were not even made aware of this change until after summer began. We simply asked, we simply asked to receive the recognition that we were promised at the beginning of our high school journey. The class rank system has been shamed for creating competition. However, too much, too little competition is just as dangerous as too much competition. Recognizing a 4.0 GPA, 4.0 GPA as summa cum laude places students who have never even attempted to take an advanced class on the same level as those who have constantly challenged themselves. Raising the GPA requirement to even a 4.1 will solve this, as students can still receive the highest recognition with fewer advanced classes. In conclusion, I understand that the Melville School District will eventually adopt the cum laude system, and I understand why. However, I think it is completely unacceptable to rush into the system this coming school year without considering the students. After all, improper implementation directly harms us and only us. On behalf of the class of 2018, we are all already very overwhelmed, and suddenly changing the rules near the end of our high school experience puts us at a disadvantage. Thank you so much for letting me speak here today, and I hope the decision made about this issue will put the students above all else. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education. Dr. Gaines, Dr. Bressler, and fellow community members. My name is Maddie, and as you may recall, I spoke at the June 8th Board of Education meeting in regards to the policy IKC. Completely removing class rank abolishes a very important data point that colleges consider for admissions and competitive scholarships. Many students take great pride in their class rank, for it is representative of their efforts. Surely, it may lend itself to competition, but competition is healthy. Competition is what life's all about. In fact, there was competition for that very seat you are sitting in right now, and you accepted that competition to be here today. Dr. Gaines, you had to go through an intense competition to earn your position. When it came down to three finalists, only one was hired as superintendent, and that was you. Similarly, the students who are suitable for valedictorian and salutatorian went through a competitive process. Like the hiring of a superintendent, one outshines all other competitors. Competition keeps students working diligently while focusing on self-improvement. As expressed by several students, the policy change is unfeasible when considering its implementation and rationale. Board members, administrators, and even teachers have referred to students as, quote, "GPA chasers." This is unacceptable and unfair to refer to all students under this stereotype. It's offensive. We carefully choose classes that pertain to our individual needs. Lowering the summa cum laude threshold from 4.1 to 4.0 is not characteristic of a district of character. A high school diploma represents a student who has met the requirements for high school recognition. The cum laude system represents those students who have excelled above the basic requirements of high school diploma. Summa cum laude status represents those students who have pursued a more rigorous honors curriculum. They must be recognized. To compromise on the many sides of this issue, it is best to implement this policy change with the class of 2021, who are beginning their high school careers. The upcoming sophomores, juniors, and seniors are already within their four-year plan that the district implemented upon high school entry. A policy change mid-career is unfair to these students. I appreciate your consideration towards a serious subject that pertains to currently enrolled high school students. As students, we continue to have concern of the negative impact to the top achievers, who inevitably are the face of our district. It is the top MAP scores, high ACT composites, and advanced scores on end-of-course exams that provides the district with its sought-after credentials. Please distinguish these students for the recognition they unarguably deserve. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Olivia Rawls, and I'm in the class of 2018 at OHS. I'd like to thank you for your time and attention as I address policy IKC regarding class rank. I take a very rigorous course load. This past year, I took five AP classes, and my other two were weighted college credit courses. All of them were advanced and difficult classes, but I want to make it clear that a GPA boost had nothing to do with my course selections. I chose these classes because they're what I'm interested in. They challenge me, and in turn, I don't get bored, so I'm more interested and engaged in what I'm learning. Less rigorous classes do not result in the same effect. I learn material much better and more deeply in these advanced classes, and that's why I'm drawn to them. In fact, I didn't even process the fact that all of my junior year classes were weighted until after I had already turned in my course request sophomore year. And I didn't just take these classes, I excelled in them. Because of that, I'm at the top of my class. Everyone has strengths and weaknesses, and it's undeniable that my primary strengths lie in academic fields. But I also have many weaknesses. I have no hand-eye coordination, I'm terrible at sports, I can't draw to save my life, I sound like a dying cat when I sing, I can't play an instrument, though I've tried, and when it comes to cooking, all I can make is grilled cheese and butter noodles. I wouldn't expect to be applauded for any of these things, but I would also never ask that anyone who is talented in these fields be denied recognition for their talents and achievements. But that's exactly what this policy is doing in regards to academics. Even so, I'm not completely opposed to the prospect of eliminating class rank in the future. But the timing of it all now is unreasonable. It's far too late for this policy to be implemented for the class of 2018 without inadvertently causing harm for some students. I already think it's bad enough to consider implementing this for anyone who's already started their high school career. I think the best course of action is to implement it for incoming freshmen. But at the very least, this cannot be implemented smoothly for the class of 2018. First, we would not reap the benefits of the supposed increased freedom in scheduling. And second, college and scholarship applications are already open, coming into full swing at the start of August. So you now have, at best, one month to solve any and all problems and considerations regarding this policy, and completely and adequately communicate everything regarding this change to all parents and students. I don't think this is feasible to do during a single month, especially not in July, when students and a large proportion of faculty are on break. At this point, I cannot understand how this change could be polished and effectively communicated in such a short timeframe to prevent inevitable discrepancies between our school profile, our transcripts, and our self-reported information, which will certainly raise red flags for schools and scholarship sponsors. In this sense, all students in my class who intend to enter college could potentially be harmed, not because of the concept of the policy, but simply because the actual implementation has been rushed. Thank you again for your consideration.
Hi, thanks for listening to me pontificate about class rank again. I really appreciate it. I'm Liz Rawls, a parent of that really great kid that just spoke to you. I just want to kind of expand a little bit on some of the concerns. It is inarguable that some kids will be benefited by a removal of class rank. It is also difficult to argue that some kids, like some of the ones you just heard from, will benefit from the removal of class rank. I think it's important, and I think really my main contention at this time is the timeframe of implementing the policy for the class of 2018. College admissions counselors recommend that if you're going to not have class rank as a data point, that your school profile information that accompanies a transcript is quite comprehensive, including such things as average weighted GPA plus the standard deviation, and average unweighted GPA and its standard deviation. That allows colleges to effectively use the information on an individual student's transcript to determine whether or not they'll fit in to a perhaps highly selective school. Schools in our region know Oakville, and they know Melville. We don't need to sell our district on regional schools. We have students that are looking outside of our region, and we have students that are looking at schools perhaps that we've never sent a graduate to. It's important that our kids, all of our kids, from the first kid in the class to the last kid in the class, have the opportunity that they want to follow their dreams, and we are responsible for making sure that they have that opportunity without any harm done to them by a policy. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Angie Franzey, and my daughter is going into second grade at Woolwind, and I have twin boys who will begin kindergarten in 2019. I understand that the board members have taken a considerable amount of time reviewing the terms of the contract and studying its ramifications. Why not put people at ease by taking into account the opinion of the parents and the community through a survey? We have been asked our opinion on many other topics, so why would this be any different? You had no legal obligation to discuss this sale publicly, but you chose to do so because you felt it was the right thing to do. You have no legal obligation to survey the opinion of the community either, but what is legal is very different than what is moral. If the results come back that the people are in favor, or even that 50% are in favor and 50% are opposed, then you know where the community stands, and you can be confident in a decision done with due diligence. Next, my daughter has dropped off at Y Care at 6:30, and there is no SRO on site yet, even though there are students at the school. It is true that Aldi does not open until nine, but there will be store employees, vendors, and delivery drivers on the property at any given hour. When my child is picked up from Y Care in the afternoon, the SRO has already left, even though there are still students on the property. So with the proposed sale to Aldi, will there be an SRO on the property at all times, from the moment the first child walks in the door until the last child leaves? The school board members I have spoken to prior to this meeting were unable to answer this question. Anytime there is an event happening at the schools where there are students on the premises, school hours or not, there should be an SRO on duty. Adult supervision is not the same as a police presence. Lastly, by building this store so close to the school, you are increasing the risk of something happening to a child. The school and the area around it is supposed to be a safe zone. There are currently 10 registered sex offenders living or working within a mile of the schools, and those are only the ones that are registered. I realize that they will be there whether the Aldi is built or not, but if the store is there, you are handing them an invitation to enter your safe zone. One foot closer is too close. If you can minimize this risk, why would you not do that? I remember seeing a news story last year about a man who tried to kidnap a girl who was standing right next to her mother at a grocery store. He grabbed her and dragged her toward the door, and it was all caught on surveillance. I looked this up on YouTube yesterday, and nearly a dozen more videos just like it popped up. Now transfer that idea over 100, 150 or 200 yards to where our kids are getting on and off the bus, where they're playing on the playground? People might think that I'm an overly paranoid mother, but if things like this are not being considered by the school board members, then I cannot believe that there is a true perception of what is really going on in the world around us, where kids are getting taken right out of their front yards. Predators are bold, and if they see an opportunity, they are going to take it. By allowing this store to be built so close to these schools, you are handing criminals and predators an invitation to enter our children's safe zone. This places our children, my children, your children at risk, and in my opinion, it's unacceptable. Thank you for your time.
Name is Donna Seidel. I am a longtime resident, parent, and community activist, and I'm here to talk on two subjects tonight. The first one being the change to class rank. I do believe that the reasons for the change in class ranking where the valedictorian and salatorian are eliminated, I think those reasons are invalid. I see this as a watering down of recognition for our high achievers. These high achieve kids are pulling up the stats across the district. They are the academic rock stars. Keep in mind, the class of 2018 is getting this news in the 11th hour. The rules are being changed at the end of the game for them. Yes, life isn't always fair. These kids are well aware of this fact of life. They've endured years of budget cuts that are only now beginning to be restored. And, beginning this year, a new schedule, new block schedule has been sprung on them. This is their final year. They are masters at adapting to change, for better or for worse. The kids graduating in classes through 2020 are in the same predicament. If a change is needed and is implemented, I request that you start it with the class of 2021, so that they can be better prepared. The other subject I want to speak about is the potential sale of property at OMS and Woolwind. Keep in mind, Melville School District shouldered the financial burden of that traffic signal that's there. I know a little something about that. No other nearby nonprofit business contributed to the cost, even though they reap the benefits as their own campus continually expands. My question is, will future property owners of the property being considered for sale assume the financial burden to maintain safe passage into and out of the school campus? I ask that you keep in mind that your first and foremost duty is to the children of the district. Thank you for listening, and I hope you take these concerns to heart as you cast your votes. Have a good evening.
I wanted to speak tonight in favor of the land sale to Aldi. I've lived almost all of my life in Melville and support the growth of our community, be it from the profit of a land sale, which could be used to improve our schools, or the welcoming of a business into the neighborhood. The opposition has argued that the safety of our children would be compromised due to increased traffic and congestion. While I respect their fear, I can't agree. I read on one Facebook post that it wouldn't be safe for kids walking to or from school or to Dearburgs or to Bread Company. I personally would have a greater fear of my kids walking on Telegraph or in the Dearburgs Plaza. It seems some have confused that plaza with the Indy 500 and Telegraph with the Autobahn. We all need to remind our kids to be cognizant of traffic, no matter the road, no matter the parking lot. Another complaint seems to be traffic congestion. I don't agree with this either unless everyone in the 63129 decides at the same time to run to Aldi for some granola bars and wine. I don't see how this will cause an outrageous amount of congestion. Just like everyone knows you don't go to the License Bureau on the last day of the month, I would plan to avoid Aldi during drop-off and dismissal times. Just some food for thought, pun wholeheartedly intended. I have faith that you've all weighed the good, the bad, and trust you to make a decision that's in the interest of our kids foremost, but also that of our community. Thank you.
My name is Jenna Seda, and I'm a parent at Oakville Elementary. I am here tonight to express my support of not only Aldi coming to Oakville, but of this Board of Education. I want to thank you all for your commitment, your time away from your family, and your transparency to our community on this issue. This agenda item did not have to be presented to the public, but you did so, I'm sure, knowing the issues that would be raised, because after all, you've looked at this sale contract for far longer than the two weeks that we have. For those who are accusing the Board of ignoring safety concerns, I say to you that there does not seem to be an issue to me in that case. Many of these board members in front of you are not just serving as board members, but also as active and involved parents whose children will attend OMS and Woolwind. For those who want an Aldi but don't feel the location is right, that is the location that they want. We do not often get new business in Oakville, and this is a good opportunity for low-cost shopping and higher-than-minimum-wage jobs for our residents. I want to thank the Board for continuing to be innovative and expanding our opportunities for our students. Decisions like the sale of the OMS-Woolwind property to Aldi are not easy, and I know that they're not made in haste. I believe the Board has done their due diligence with this matter and went above and beyond by allowing this in the open session. I am excited to see this Board continue to take risks and not play it safe. If there's one thing that I learned from being on the redistricting committee, it is that the MSD buildings are not laid out on a map in an ideal location. I believe this has often caused us to be wary of losing land and becoming landlocked. However, even with this sale, the OMS-Woolwind property will not be landlocked. With the money from this sale, MSD can pursue more usable spaces and address existing building concerns. I want to leave you tonight with a thought from Marie Condi, author of The Life-Changing Method of Tidying Up. If it brings you joy, keep it. If it does not, get rid of it. And this land is not bringing joy to MSD, so it's time to get rid of it. Bring Aldi to Oakville. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Adrian Bai. Thank you for having us tonight, first of all, and allow us to voice our concerns. Let me start by saying I understand. I understand that the need is to generate revenue for the district and to give Oakville Elementary safer parking options. That's why I voted yes for Prop R, and that's why I helped fundraise for Woolwind and donate to Woolwind. I have two girls that go to Woolwind. While I understand this need, I have to disagree with selling this portion of the school property to Aldi is the best way to go about that. I live on Pioneer Drive, which is directly across, which is the street that's closest, and actually butts up to the two schools. I have spent all year teaching my kids how to cross the street, how to just cross the parking lot safely, how to peek around the parked cars, because there is no officer there when they get out of school. I have spent time showing them how to look at driver's behavior, to have them wave them on, to look at the other side, to wait until a car comes to a complete stop. So I have done my duty as a parent to make sure they safely make it across just a small piece of the parking lot. I did this because I wanted to give them the freedom to walk home on their own, which is something I think that I had as a child, and some of our kids don't get. We have a unique opportunity to live in where we live, to give that to them. And that is one of the many reasons I moved to that street, for space, for that freedom to live so close to the schools. I feel as though stating there is no increased risk for safety is a little unfair. I watch out my kitchen window while I'm doing dishes, seeing how many people come and go for the, you know, to use the tracker to go to the Cliff Cave Park, and I do not believe that there will be that least, Aldi's will have way more people coming in and out than just that on a normal day. You can make every attempt to make it safer in contract language, but you cannot control the everyday person who may not be paying attention or driving fast. I feel like if it was the right thing to do, it would not have taken eight years to say yes. Not all land that can be sold should be sold. I do my part to ensure my children's safety. Please do your part and vote no on this. I appreciate it. Thank you.
My name is Michelle McCollum. I also live on Pioneer, next to Adrian. I am in complete agreement with the safety concerns and the traffic concerns. I also have a little bit of a personal concern. My backyard butts up to the fields at Woolwind Elementary. You can throw a stone, and it's right there. Twice now, our backyard is flooded to the point that it has almost covered our four-foot-tall chain-link fence. I was told that MSD has to approve any engineering that goes into building, the Aldi's building, and I would like to know where the water's going to go. Right now, the water does flow next to our house into a sinkhole with Aldi's there. That building will be covering that flow of water. If it goes around the building, my backyard is the lowest point, and my house will flood. So I'd like to know if that's true, if MSD does have to approve anything before permit. And I seriously considered moving because of some of the issues we've had. We wanted to stay in the school district. We love Oakville. My daughter is going into second grade at Woolwind. My son went to Woolwind and to OMS. He's now a freshman. We never imagined there would be any selling of property. That's why we decided to stay, was because of the school, because of the fields. Sports teams practice in those fields, church teams practice in those fields, my children play in those fields, my neighbor's children play in those fields. The safety concern is there, and I think it's only right to acknowledge that. Also, the right-only turn lane, from the pictures I've seen, is going to be very close to our subdivision entrance. It's almost impossible now to make a left turn out of our subdivision to get to the school, and with a right-only turn lane to go in, I can't imagine how we're going to make a left. We have to wait for the light now at the school to make a left. And also, the pictures make it, if you look at the pictures that I've seen, it is literally in my backyard. My fence line, it looks like it's just maybe three yards from my fence line and about 12 feet in. So I will literally look outside and see Aldi's. I think if, from the pictures I've seen, the loading dock is going to be facing my home, and I'm sure the parking lot lights at night will be on all night, so I'm assuming I'll have parking lot lights in my house. So that's a main concern for us as well. Thank you.
So I'm actually, originally, I wasn't going to go so much for or against the selling of the property, but the more I heard people discuss it, I felt like I probably at least needed to make my opinion known. So I'm actually, against my better judgment, picking sides. I actually think selling the property is probably in everybody's best interest, and I know it's not a favorable thing from what I'm picking up, but the main thing that I'm hearing is just like safety concerns. And from everything that I've tried to pick up on, most of it has been addressed, but it's the same argument I'm hearing, you know, like it's going to cause extra this and extra that, but, I mean, even without the Aldi's, those same risks are, they're going to be there. I mean, it's called life. I meant, whether there's an Aldi's there or not, I mean, you're going to have kids walking through an empty lot next to, like, Dearb, I mean, it's the same issues for everybody, so I honestly think, in this case, the pros outweigh the cons, mainly just because looking at the numbers, like financially, where, you know, the amount, even reoccurring revenue from taxes and being able to spend that money to benefit us, I think, from getting a new property that we can actually use, as opposed to just having something that we have that's valuable, that's just sitting there, literally giving no benefit to any of our students at all. So I think just to address the primary concern of safety, like I said, it's not the Board's decision to sell the property to Aldi's, it's not, it's not, you know, on you guys whether or not it's a safe transit. That's irrelevant. So I just had to say that I'm definitely for it. I think the money is going to probably go a long way and make a big difference, so I just wanted to say that. So, that's it. So, thanks.
Good evening, Board of Education. Dr. Gaines and Community. My name is Emma Miller, and I'm an incoming junior this year at Oakville High School. Currently, I rank eighth out of 364 students within my junior class. My GPA is a 4.125. I'm I am proud of my accomplishments. I have aspirations to graduate summa cum laude, as do many of my classmates, and hope that the GPA is set at 4.1 for that recognition. Clearly, if I am able to attain this as a sophomore, then it is achievable in a senior year. Some of the classes that I have taken so far are AP European History, Spanish III, Honors Geometry, and Honors Chemistry. As high-achieving students, we work hard with long hours devoted to our studies while also participating in various sports and clubs. I personally compete on two varsity sports teams. I am also extremely active within my church and community. I am not a GPA chaser, and I do not appreciate being stereotyped as one. I am self-motivated. The weighted classes that I have taken and plan to take are a reflection of my drive and interests. I am requesting that the classes of 2018, 2019, and 2020 be grandfathered, but it is my hope that the original policy will be upheld. I and my peers have already set personal goals that the new policy does not support. In addition, I am also worried about my sisters, and if the academic bar will be a set, will be set as high for them as it is for me, should this policy change. I ask that you please consider returning this policy to its original state. Thank you.
I'm Teresa Tozzi. I'm a Melville School System parent and of an incoming second grader. My child attended Woolwind, starting when we moved to the St. Louis area in January. In my statements, let me address the concerns of Board Member Larry Felton, so that we can be transparent regarding what he said about dissenting Facebook page comments. We're long on opinion, short on facts, and even shorter on research. I've included some research for him in this talk. Mr. Felton, we applaud the transparency and believe it should be the way the school system does business on a regular basis. However, please understand that transparency does not guarantee agreement. In the next three minutes, I present to you a list of, a grocery list of reasons Aldi next door to a middle school and elementary school is a bad idea. One, sharing an access road is a bad idea. Already, the intersection of the school road and busy Telegraph is an issue. I don't really need to tell anyone who's ever done that during a school day. Sharing that already congestive area with a potentially busy grocery store will not improve the traffic flow regardless of any suggested remedies. Opening up our, number two, opening up our schools to additional uncontrollable and variable factors does not improve safety of our children or the school staff, and it's a bad idea. In 1999, a study of scientists Switzer and all concluded that for a block of variable to represent a bus stop, a grocery store, or a park within two blocks showed significant correlation between crime and their presence. Number three, our schools are already at risk for violent crime. Opening them up to additional risks is a bad idea. In 2013-14, public school principals across the country were asked to provide a number of incidents of violent crime. The figure, the figure that they discovered was that an estimated 757,000 incidents occurred across our country in elementary and middle schools. This figure translates to a rate of approximately 15 crimes per 1,000 students enrolled. Now, using this data from Albuquerque, New Mexico, some of the scientists found that neighborhoods with middle schools in particular were high-risk for experience with drug crime in those neighborhoods because they're middle schools. Giving our children additional access to drugs or alcohol is a bad idea. The 2009 Youth Risk Behavior Surveillance System highlights the availability of drugs on a campus. 23% of student respondents reported that they were offered, sold, or given an illegal drug on school property sometime within the last 12 months. Nonetheless, surprising little research is roles, has focused on the role that schools play in shaping adolescent access to drugs. So according to Cohen and Felson in this study, levels of crime, especially those in places that are characterized by limited guardianship, have a higher result in crime. The connection between our kids and exposed to alcohol and advertising around grocery stores and underage drinking is well-documented. According to the Justice Department, that these are issues that are putting our kids at risk, making them victims. It's a bad idea. My experience is, this is not a good idea for our youth. We need to consider the options. You need to really lay these out very completely. A grocery store in this area is a bad idea. Thank you.
My name is Janet Kirkpatrick. I'm a parent of a high school student who's gonna graduate in 2019. I'm also a teacher at another high school that has implemented and adopted the cum-laud We adopted the cum-laud system in 2012, and it started in the 2013-14 school year. We didn't have much problem with people in the community getting angry, because we started it with the incoming freshman class. We've now successfully gone through, I guess this will be our, you know, fifth year, the second year of all cum-laud. But the students who had already been in the high school were still ranked. If they weren't in the high school previously, then they started on the cum-laud system. Also, those records that your system generates automatically can tally student rank. There's no reason for parents not to have that information if they want it. My student is number 15 in the class, and I'm going to use that as a marketing point when I take her to colleges. You know, I think that's important. There's nothing wrong with a little friendly competition. Her best friend is number one in the class. So, I mean, that works great for them. They, you know, they get their grades, and they tear them open, and then they call and compare to see how well things are going for each of them. We give MVP trophies and awards in excellence for sports, for teachers, for districts. And I think this is something, this is something that the kids work for. They care about it. They wanna move up in those ranks. Every time we get that, the grades, you know, they want, they wanna see where their friends are at. They wanna see where they're at. And I just want to be able to use that, you know, in the future, for her, to, you know, to further her educational career, because, you know, she, she, that's one thing she does very, very well, is academics. And thank you.
My name is Ken Leach. I'm a former Board Member. In December 2007, we implemented a grading, a weighted grading system, and I think it's been highly effective. You can see the graphs that I passed out. Got the figures from DESI, and they show clearly that the incoming freshmen that were experienced with the weighted grades, when they became juniors and took the ACTs, that the 2009 scores went from an all-time low to an all-time high during that time span. Went on to 2015 to make another record high. Of course, in 2016, it went down when, when the state paid for all the ACTs and everyone entered it. What does that have to do with class rank? Because that's what I'm here for. Well, basically, it has to do with competition. Competition, I think, is the catalyst in both of those situations. It extended the students to challenge themselves and to take on classes with a risk-reward type of situation. So I think that helped them to learn more and do better in the ACTs. So that competition is the same in ranking, ranking spurs competition. As a United States Naval Academy Admissions Officer for the past 15 years, I know that a competitive school will look for any kind of differentiator that they can to dip, to give you an appointment. If you don't have the differentiator, you're just like a thousand behind you, no matter how impressive it is. And you won't get the appointment, you'll be at the end of the line. So, so ranking is important. Ranking is important in our school system. We use A, Bs, and Cs still, don't we? Ranking is important to the faculty. Ranking is important to the administration. When I was on the Board, it was always included when it comes, to talk about salaries, about median salaries in competitive, you know, like, like districts. And I think it's a very effective, you know, method. I voted for increases because I thought it was a specific direction and position it showed. So ranking meant something to you then, and it means something to people like Preeti and Maddie now. These are our best and our brightest. We can't, we can't turn ourselves away from them. Three years ago, we asked those students to start in a race, and we told them to prepare for it, and we told them what the race was, and to choose a race that they wanted to run. They prepared, and they worked hard, and they put a lot of sweat into it. And then three-quarters of the way through the round, all of a sudden, we moved the finish line for them. That's not right. It's not right to move it now. At the very least, we should give those individuals an opportunity to include their ranking in their transcripts, and better yet, it'd be better to just let them finish the race. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for letting us come and speak today. My husband and I moved to the area about four years ago. We have two children now, two and a half and one, so they will be entering the school soon. And I would like to voice my concerns about the sale of the property. While I understand all the safety concerns, and I have the same safety concerns, but I see that the district is actually in need of money, which is clearly why you're selling the property. So I propose, instead of having the sale of the property, put it to the community and have the community vote on maybe another tax increase, because I'd prefer to pay more taxes than have the sale of the property to go to a grocery store or any other type of commercial enterprise. Because then that leaves the school district, you won't be, I feel like we could use that property to, to expand in the future, and if there's a store or whatever it may be there, then you may not be able to expand or use that property because somebody else is there on the, on the property. So that's my concern. I feel like, like I said again, I would like to pay more taxes and see the community vote on that, rather than sell the property. Because I have to say, in the future, I feel like if there would be another tax increase, then my husband and I might vote no for, to increase the taxes. And I do know that there are some people that we are friends with who are concerned about the sale and are looking to move out of the district because of the sale of the property. So if we could just put that to a vote, maybe, let the people pay, see if we would like to pay more taxes. Thank you for your time.
My name is Marya Cluth-Hoppe, and I too am a former Board Member. In regards to the class ranking, I am not sure that the proposed changes are the best way to proceed. You've had a number of speakers that have spoken about the pros and cons, so I will not. But if the policy is changed to a magna, summa, cum laude range, it should be implemented with the incoming freshman class, not with the existing sophomores, juniors, and senior class. As an example, if the state curriculum requirements change, you can't backtrack and make sophomores, juniors, and seniors comply with those requirements. Kinda hard to take four years of some subject matter when you've already done two years in your school. So again, I would definitely ask that if it is implemented, to make it with the new freshman class. And as a disclaimer, my daughter was a valedictorian in MHS in 2004 with six other students when we did not have a weighted grade system. Since I have time, I will go on to my second thought about Aldi's. The district is working to make the proposed Aldi's as safe as possible. But please remember, for everybody else sitting out here, the district cannot control the usage of all neighboring property, such as the coming QT at the corner of Union and Rivas Barracks, which is surrounded on two sides by Beerbaum Elementary, where my daughter went. There too will be traffic issues, there too may be strangers coming and wandering off the wrong way, or whatever other concerns people have noted. So all that the district at this point can do is to look at those concerns and see what they can do to best keep the children safe, no matter who their neighbors are. Thirdly, I would like to say thank you to all of you for the time that you give to study, research, analyze data on issues, listen to many of us speak and other opinions, or read opinions, as you prepare to make your decisions that impact the education of our children. Your decisions will not make everyone happy. Been there, understand that. And may even differ from some of your other Board Members. Unfortunately, that's the nature of your position. But again, thank you for taking your time to serve the children, the district, and your community.
Yeah, my name is David Lawton, and I wanna talk about the sale of Aldi's. Listen, you, you guys have gotten from Proposition R, like, eight and a half million. Just six or eight months ago, they rolled over another tax increase, and now, this year, they're reassessing houses. How much money do you need? I mean, you're talking 800,000 from the sale of this property, and it's not coming up. It's not coming up right. No matter how, no matter how you try to work this out, there is gonna be a jam at that intersection so bad at 2:00 in the afternoon, or whenever the children get out. It's gonna be very dangerous, not just mildly dangerous, very dangerous, because there's people gonna be trying to cut over, there's gonna be people that wanna turn in front of the buses and go into Aldi's at the, at the time school's out. There'll be people that are picking up their kids and going, "I gotta get milk and bread", and they're gonna cut in front of the buses. And irregardless of whether you believe that or not, it's gonna happen, and somebody's gonna get hurt. And it's like, I just, I just can't believe that you guys, for $800,000, you're gonna screw over all of the residents that live on the other side of Telegraph Road out there. Most of the people that are here don't live out there. It's like, they don't have no problems. At 5:00 in the afternoon, we will, it'll be, it'll be a mess, and that's the way it is. Thank you very much. I appreciate you listening to me.
My name is Erica Seidel. I haven't spoken in front of one of these in a pretty long time, and I don't feel like covering, covering most of the pros and cons that most of my peers have done, but what I do wanna express to you guys is that while the changing of class rank system is not gonna affect me directly, it's gonna affect people that I'm in classes, but it's gonna affect people that I've been in classes with for longer than I've been in high school even. And these are kids that I know, they've worked their tails off, they're up all night getting these stupid projects done. There's a lot of really annoying things about these classes that we're working for. And believe me, if we were tracing after a GPA, I think most of these kids would probably given up. We're doing it because we want to. We're doing it because this is something that betters our lives and betters our opportunities for the future, because we want something out of what we're doing. To take this away from them takes away an opportunity to, that will get them into certain colleges, that will get them into very selective, very elite colleges that are gonna get them this better career opportunities they've been seeking for so long. And, and I understand why you wanna change this, but the thing is, is that we're in the 11th hour, and this is nothing new either. There's a lot of changes that go on in our year with our grade in particular that we're not immediately made aware of. We were supposed to submit schedules for this year back in February, and we didn't find out what the day-to-day schedule for the upcoming school year was until the end of May, after we had already let out for the year. So to change this over the summer, when most of us aren't even really aware that this is going on, there's only a handful of kids in my grade right now that are even aware that this is happening, it's just so completely mind-boggling why you would wanna do this. And again, I do agree with the idea of like, changing it, but I do not think that it should be with my grade, it should be with a class of 2021, or even later, it just depends on how long you need to get this ready, because right now, we're not ready for it. Thank you.
Can we get your first and last name, please?
Brandon Wernig.
What's the last name?
Wernig.
Could you spell that, please?
W-E-R-N-I-G.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Brandon Wernig, and I'm sure most- Hello, I am Brandon Wernig, and I'm sure most of the board knows my name very well. As the valedictorian of 2016, I feel personally responsible for this unnecessary change. I had a 4.51 GPA, a 33 ACT, and was involved in several extracurriculars. Sure, I strove to be, or strove to get as high of a GPA as possible, which makes me a GPA chaser, as you say. At least I admit it. But that wasn't my initial intention. Plus, competition is statistically proven to increase productivity. Myself and the salutatorian Steve White pushed each other and studied together in order to be the best we could. We thankfully had the same tap teacher, Mrs. Teens, and he started as ranked seven freshman year. But together, we became number one and number two. And guess what happened junior year? We were put into two separate tap classes because we made Mrs. Teens, our tap teacher, feel terrible about herself because we were young and disrespectful. But two study buddies and good friends were separated over words we typed on a document that were genuine complaints about her as a teacher. We come from totally different backgrounds and don't hang out very often, but he is my best friend and always will be because he helped me get through the worst years of my life, which occurred at Melville High School. I was kicked out of NJHS in middle school. I was kicked out of NHS in high school right as I was about to turn in my 16 volunteering hours I did at the St. Vincent-Tapaul Thrift Store. I did not get the recognition nor the respect I deserved for everything I did for this school and probably never will. I helped tutor countless students. However, all the teachers and students could do was make fun of me. I would try to help teachers by explaining how I understood a concept so they could better teach my fellow students. But many times, I was, I was told, "Would you like to teach the class yourself?" "Huh? That's not my job, is it?" Few people respected me and I didn't care. I earned my grades. I did it without the help most others did or others got since I grew up poor and didn't have the same resources most have in South County. And no, I don't want any sympathy. I want you to understand scaring kids straight doesn't work, especially if they are smart. As someone that would, that experienced DARE and Project Purple, it was a joke to me. I wear this bracelet ironically because I don't respect that rule. It's a joke. I respect not doing heroin. Good point. But the rest of it, figure it out on your own. Sure, we sang along to the words, but the meaning was nonexistent to most of us. I studied with friends, and guess what? We would smoke weed. During graduation, I was extremely high and had cornrows. But guess what? There was nothing you guys could do about it. I'm not done. There was nothing you guys could do about it without causing an issue. And now you're trying to protect yourself from future Brandon Wernigs. Guess what? No one will ever be a Brandon Wernig. The reason I did it was because the school district needs to understand the system is flawed. On certain days, people would check on the classes. I guess like, I don't know what the term is for them, but like college classes, they would check in on them.
You've got about 10 more seconds, okay?
I'm done then.
Thank you. Do we have one more?
Hello.
Hi, can you give us your first and last?
Rochelle Bitter.
Thank you.
You ready?
Yes, please, I'm sorry.
My name is Rochelle Bitter, and I would like to discuss just a few things about the possible selling of the Melville School District land to Aldi. I didn't vote for any of you because I wanted your input, anything retail or commercial related within our community. Nor do I feel that it is your decision to decide what retail space is good for our community. I voted for you because I wanted you to focus on education of our children. If Aldi's buys this property, it'll be around a lot longer than your seats on the board. You weren't voted in to bring retail into our community. You were voted in to help education. This Aldi's offer is a bad deal for Melville School District. The price is too low. This property has been in the eyes of Aldi's for years. And this board is willing to sell this piece of property for less than what it was originally offered and less than what it's actually worth. I would like to ask the board if anybody has actual proof that this land is unusable. We've heard the song and dance before, John Kerry. Clearly, it can't be that unusable if Aldi's is able to use the land. Has the board taken proper steps to inspect the land? And do we have any documentation that the land is completely unusable forever and ever? A one-time payment of $815,000 is too low. It might put a Band-Aid on a thing for a year, but then what? Our goal should be better than continuing to put Band-Aids on things. Our goal should be, should also not be dismissing the voices of our community. Our goal should be a better vision for our district than this, and we should be focusing on our future. This Aldi's offer is starting to divide our community. And I would ask that you, all of you exhaust all options and consider all of your constituents and all their concerns before casting a vote. Not all land that can be sold should be sold. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we have standing committee reports. Does anybody have anything?
So we had a policy committee meeting, but we're going to be talking about many of these in detail. Certainly some that were already touched on tonight. We appreciate your thoughts and comments with regards to policies, primarily the rank policy. But I think Mr. Catalano is going to be presenting that or talking about that in a little bit later.
I can't hear you.
You can't hear me?
No.
I'm, but I'm turned on.
Oh, okay.
Can you all hear me?
Can you hear her?
It's rare that people can't hear me.
No, they can't hear.
Okay.
Okay.
I need to do a redo, Jean.
No, no, it's okay.
All right.
I'm good.
And we will move on to action items by consent. We have reading of minutes of previous meetings, financials for May, warrants for June, approvals of resignation, leave contract, and/or employee hires, and then the 2017-18 district assessment plan. Can I get a motion to approve action items by consent?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to...
Sam, do we have anything in student?
Do we have anything in student achievement?
Let's see. Nope.
Okay.
It's still printed on our sheet.
Yeah, I don't know why it's on.
Okay, so we will move on to our consider food service bids.
Ms. Katie?
Good evening. How are y'all? Each year, as you guys know, we receive proposals for five different areas of food for supplies for this upcoming school year. Those are bread, ice cream, milk, Prime Vendor, and produce. I supplied you guys with the different bid. We received in different categories, different amounts. I, I put a notice on the website. I sent them out to everybody we know at other districts. And what we got back, and as you guys could see from the breakdown I provided you, I am recommending the lowest bidder on each category. I also do consider customer service, and I network with other districts. Actually, all of them we've already used except our Prime Vendor. That makes me a little nervous because that's our biggest guy. But I've networked with other districts that do use US Foods. And I'm hopeful and confident with great communication that it'll go well. So that is, so I'm recommending Alpha Bread, Alpha Baking for our bread, North Star for ice cream, Prairie Farms for milk, US Foods for Prime Vendor, and Sun Farm Produce for next school year. Well, our ice cream vendor, we used this previous, the previous, this past school year, did submit a bid after it was due, but service wasn't there. So I had some serious doubts anyway, so. And actually, some of the ice cream we did get last year, I put into our Prime Vendor bid, so US Foods would be able to provide a lot of our ice cream as well. There's just not many ice cream vendors for the Smart Snack guidelines, so. Yes, I'm, like I said, Prime Vendor, I, you know, a little nervous going with somebody new, but they were very competitive. They have been getting competitive each, each school year in the past. And I, I feel with good communication, there's always bumps in the road, but we'll work through those bumps with good communication.
I actually, I actually feel like you have more bids this year than I've seen in the past for a lot of these areas.
We've only, unfortunately, with others besides the Prime Vendor, we used to receive about three or four from Prime Vendor, but this year we've only received two. And it wasn't like that last year's too as well. We only got two back. But the same thing with ice cream. Ladder distributors are getting away from schools because we're so sophisticated with our products. And they can make more money off of restaurants. So they want to house their products as opposed to ours. So it, it's good that US Foods is, is up in the game, so I think they're worth a try.
And who did we use prior to that?
Coal.
We did use Coal, okay.
Yeah. Coal is the main school supplier in the area. But like I said, it's, it's good to have a little competition on their wings, so.
Any further?
I'll move on if you want.
I move the Board of Education approve the following vendors for the 2017-2018 school year. Bread, Alpha Baking, ice cream, North Star, Milk Prairie Farms, Prime Vendor, US Foods, Produce, Sun Farm.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. And then Katie, you're still up again.
Yeah, I'm still up, yeah.
Consider meal prices.
Yeah, this is all tied into the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act of 2010. It does require districts that participate in the program to slowly increase their full-paid meal prices to have all levels of support being the federal reimbursement received for every free meal be the same as what we receive from the government for a full-paid meal plus what we charge to be equally the same across the board. And right now, that is $3.22 is what we get back for every free meal. And what we get back for every full-paid meal is only .36. So we're supposed to slowly increase our full-pay price to get to $286. When you add the $286 with the .36, it equals the $3.22. They want every meal to be the same across the board. They do allow us, even though we're quite a bit off of $386, they said you only have to go up 10 cents a year because they understand communities slowly can't handle a, or slowly make that change as opposed to 50 cents right out of the gate. So we haven't had to increase the past couple of years, but when I run the numbers in the government PLE tool, which are always fun to do, it says we have to this year. So I am recommending just the minimum threshold of 10 cents.
So there's really no, no way to vary this, is there?
Not really. And, and to be honest, and I keep, and I don't mean to keep repeating this, but I do network with other districts, look at their stuff, look at their menus, look at their pricing, and, and we are lower. But everybody is making that creep up as well to get to that $286 is where we need to be.
Okay.
So your budget is in good shape. I mean, you keep up the kitchens. You have a little bit of a surplus.
Right, to replace equipment or redo a kitchen across the street.
So someone might try to argue that, hey, we're charging too much. But this is actually a federal law.
This is federal law.
The federal government is forcing us to be at this level.
Correct, as well as...
I just think that's a real important point for people to understand.
Right.
Great, Kevin. I need one more reason not to like the federal government.
But as far as, and I am recommending, now breakfast, there is no requirement on increasing breakfast prices, but we are considerably low when we're at a dollar for breakfast. And as our numbers are increasing with our full-paid students, it's, I need to make the jump to a dollar 50 or I am losing money with the meals served. I, I mean, it's still a dollar 50 and you could get four menu items, which is a pretty good deal.
Well, our food service numbers have always been rock star. I mean, you guys do a really good job at what you do.
Well, thank you.
There's really not much reason to scrutinize it, you know, so.
No, not at all. And I will communicate all this in a, in a memo to our families and, and include that it is a federal requirement and explain it a little bit, so.
I'm going to be, being a family who purchases lunches and...
And we thank you for that, Lisa.
I think it's, I think we appreciate that you're doing this slowly. You know, and it's not all of a sudden, holy cow, there's this huge jump. And if, if you just said that we're fortunate in, in your area to be able to make the necessary modifications as we need to, to kitchens, et cetera, one would question why, why the 50 cent increase all of a sudden. So I think that we appreciate the slow, the gradual increase to get to where the federal government is indicating that we are, we need to be, so.
Shall we move on? I move the Board of Education approve the following meal prices for the 2017-2018 school year. Students, all levels, breakfast, a dollar 50. Elementary, lunch, $2.40. Pizza day, $2.60. Secondary school lunches, $2.65. Pizza day, spicy chicken, $2.85. Adults, breakfast, $2, and lunch, $3.25.
Second.
Please, the second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Pizza day is the favorite.
It is. Okay, moving on to our facility survey.
All right. So this spring, we did a thought exchange process around facilities that was based at the building level to begin getting feedback on the building. So the overall themes kind of across the district and then by building are broken into two pieces. One is a red box that surrounds what people told us were the concerns. So these represent the top concerns kind of overall. On the right-hand side is what the themes were when we asked about future of facilities. So I don't want to go through here and read all of these, but you can see that HVAC and mold appears on both sides. You can see that parking lands on both sides. Just a number of, of pieces. So, and these are kind of in rank order, so to speak, of what kind, what came up as number one, number two, number three. So those are just kind of overall themes when we look at the survey overall. But then as we go to specific by building, we begin to see that we have a significant variance in perhaps the individual pieces at buildings. But we still do see things like HVAC and restaurants continue to appear. And we also see in terms of future remodel and update continue to appear across buildings. And then for things like Beerbomb, where we have overcrowded, we've gone through redistricting, so redistricting will address some of that. And we have buildings where the notion of the office not being in close proximity to the front entry or being able to see the office or tell where the office is in an obvious manner when you walk in the, the front door. And then you can see that remodel and update and HVAC continue to be there. And in some of our buildings, we see a lot around parking. But in some buildings, in terms of future, we begin to see a little bit more of specifics about what people might like to see in terms of classroom space, you know, perhaps a science lab or, you know, a computer lab at various schools. At Fordor, again, the office piece comes up. And parking, because Fordor's kind of hard to get into and out of in some regards. Hagaman, if I parked my truck in Hagaman, I almost blocked the entire driveway for parking there. It's just so narrow and, and so thin. So definitely limit there. But here again, the notion of some sort of classroom lab comes into play. And of course, at Oakville Elementary, again, parking is a significant issue there. And, you know, the notion of art room because we don't have a stand... And, you know, the notion of art room because we don't have a standalone art room there. Again, parking continues to come across places as does HVAC. Begin to see technology appearing kind of more and more as well. And here at Rogers, we introduced this concept of, you know, wanting some sort of non-traditional classroom space, which we could kind of tell like a lab or something. We also see in some of our older buildings, a notion of restrooms coming forward as something to remodel and update. And, you know, the notion of technology, as I say, kind of keeps coming up. But HVAC continues to be right up there as well. Technology, outdoor lighting in a few areas come across. Berkeley Middle's got the odd one because the sinkhole, so that gets brought up there in both concerns and things to think about for the future there. And then, you know, how we use space as something looking into the future. Washington Middle, we've got the notion of building separation. A few years ago, we had done some work in that regard. And here's kind of the first time we really see furniture kind of rise to the top. And with our budget model for next year and moving forward in the capital plan, we've allocated funds for furniture on an annual basis and rotate the buildings and over a four-year cycle, I believe. Melville High School, we introduced the notion of bugs, which is largely due to the amount, or a lot of time due to the amount of food in lockers is a big cause, can be a big cause of that. Oakville High, here we begin to see that we would like an auditorium, too, for our students and a pool, you know, to have perhaps a little more equity between the two high schools in terms of resources. And at John Kerry, just kind of more space, but we're utilizing space across the district there. And we're expanding the program a little bit next year. But as we look at the district overall, I started with kind of overarching themes, and that's what came across all of the surveys. Surveys were primarily done at the building level, but for folks who weren't associated with a building in particular, they just got a kind of a generic Melville School District survey. So aging facilities, keeping them up to date, and then, you know, an odd piece on the moving forward is that in some cases, do you renovate or do you demolish and rebuild if the cost of renovation or the systems that you've got to renovate are going to be so costly. So HVAC and mold is the one that rose to the top the most, so we wanted to kind of go through what we've been doing relative to projects there. So last summer, we did some HVAC work at Oakville Middle and Washington Middle. Starting this summer, we changed how we do weekend and summer HVAC shutdown. The district in the past had essentially during the summer, pretty much operated HVAC from about five or six AM to five PM. And at five PM, it was shut down. And the buildings would heat up and get moisture overnight, and then we'd kick up and we'd crank it up again the next morning. And on Thursday, because we were on four-day weeks during the summer, it was shut down at Thursday at five o'clock, be off for the entire weekend, and then come back up Monday morning. So what we found is that we're always just fighting pulling moisture out of the building. We'd let the moisture come up on the weekends or in at night, and then the day we'd spend all day sucking it out. Last summer, we had run a little bit of an experiment in one building, and we ran it twenty-four-seven for a month, and we monitored usage and bill. And we saw our usage go up a little bit, and our bill stayed pretty close to the same. And in our recent meeting with Ameren in looking at our data, what we've discovered is that our historic practice was causing us to have a significant demand charge because we had that big demand every morning, especially on Mondays. And the demand piece is the part, the biggest piece that controls the multiplier in the bill. So now we're moving to a model of instead of this everyday roller coaster, we're kind of having a more smoother curve. We believe that'll bring down our demand charge, and even though utilization goes, will go up, we're pretty confident that the demand charge will even out or will be close to even. So we're doing that to kind of get some of the moisture out of the building. We're in the middle of an HVAC complete redo at Berkeley. That place is very much a construction zone as that is completely redone. Looking into the next three summers, we had on the slate projects at the two high schools in eighteen, some more work at Oakville, and then St. John in twenty nineteen, and a complete Hagaman redo of HVAC, much like the Berkeley redo in twenty twenty. So over that five, or over those five budgets, we're looking at about seven point one million dollars in HVAC work, primarily funded through Prop R, a little bit of kind of regular capital money, but by and large, most of that's coming out of Prop R. In terms of funding projects, we've been putting and have been budgeting into the future about four hundred and eighty kind of regular stuff, the one point seven five with Prop R, and then roughly six hundred and sixty-four thousand annually with Prop A, but that has an expiration on it. So those projects and that, those numbers alone won't allow us to catch up, much less begin to get ahead. So that leads to the notion of, you know, should there be some sort of additional funding to push us forward and catch up on some projects? And there are kind of really two ways to do that. We'll have a presentation on those a little bit later in the fall. But just as a general notion, looking forward, if we wanted to do something before Prop P kind of comes to an end, that would require an increase above what we have currently. However, if we waited until Prop P ends, then we could look at more of a tax transfer and just move existing levy from funding one thing to funding another. And then, you know, a lease purchase requires a simple majority. It works differently. A bond issue requires a four-seventh. That works a little bit. To me, the bond issue is just a little bit cleaner as an option. So as we kind of look forward and next steps around the projects and the information we got from the survey is, one, just to continue to work our facility maintenance plan. That's kind of next step, just continue to work on that. As I mentioned earlier, we're looking at doing a presentation on types of ways to finance projects and how you could do that. Not amounts, not specific projects, but here are the ways that if we wanted to, that you could go about financing projects. We anticipate doing another thought exchange to dig a little bit deeper on that future facility piece so we can see what it is kind of per building in more specifics so we can begin to narrow those projects and providing that information to the Facilities Committee. Then how do we use all of that data? And at what point do we engage an architect to begin to do significant work and start talking about getting cost estimates on specific projects? So if you look over the next three school years and when you could put something on the ballot, there's no way we could put anything on a ballot to try to do anything this November. It would be nowhere near ready. Nor probably even a year from that if we're going to do that well and figure out what projects. So the soonest that I think that you could, we could even consider doing anything is that maybe we could have something prepared in around January of twenty nineteen that could be on the April twenty nineteen ballot. That's probably the earliest. However, that's not what we're recommending. At this point, we, in looking at the total budget and what we've got going on, what we're going to look into, if we can do this, is to look at paying off our outstanding DNR and bus lease payments, if possible. We don't know if we can do that yet. In this coming school year, with the three cents that we're putting into capital projects that comes, we're making a hundred and fifty thousand dollar payment on the combined lease payments, so we would take another about three seventy-five out of that three cents to help offset that. So we've got the revenue in the budget to support that. It's already in there. We would just need to adjust the expense and what that expense is going toward, and we can adjust that in the fall amendment. And then that essentially frees up some dollars for projects in summer eighteen through twenty. And then we're also looking at kind of a three-year phase down of how we've been placing that three cents in operations and move, slowly moving that over to operations to support some salary enhancements across all employee categories. So we would slowly phase that down. So all of that kind of in combination would allow us to put an additional million and a half in projects over the next three summers by making those adjustments.
In addition to...
In addition to what we already have in the plan and is what is in the budget document. And then in this twenty twenty-one, FY twenty twenty-one, so either in the fall of twenty or the spring of twenty-one, that fifty-one cents that's being funded, that's funding the Prop R lease, look at a transfer of that. So we would need roughly four cents of that to continue to pay the lease payments through twenty twenty-nine, at least four cents is our best guess as of yesterday. And then use a portion of the pennies to support some sort of facilities issue. Don't know how many pennies, don't know how large of an issue, and use a portion of that pennies to support operations. So that's a lot in words, so how about we stick that in a graph and kind of look at it over time? And here's where we've got kind of all of that laid out. The top kind of column is just information out of the budget document, the forecast section of what we're projecting in terms of ending balances and whether or not there's an operating surplus or deficit over that time period. And that, the budget forecasts and the assumptions in the budget forecast call for salary steps and additional four hundred thousand to enhance our competitive of salaries. Then we show that phase down of the three cents all over the operations over three years. We show how we, that we could pay off that DNR and bus lease this year if that is possible, and that's a big piece of this, and that allows that one point five million in additional projects. Now that's not, you know, there are some cash flow pieces, so that's not, we can't dump all that into FY nineteen. We're going to be mindful of how we spread that out over time. And then showing a possible levy transfer on the ballot sometime during the twenty twenty-one school year. And moving into twenty-two, if that was approved, we'd have, we would need that four cents and then split to forty-seven. So that's kind of what we're looking at, kind of what we think would probably be a good plan moving forward. It puts more money into our project piece, so we're able to insert some more projects into what already was the plan. And it takes the notion of an add to the current tax rate out of the picture, and it's just a change of how we're utilizing an existing tax rate. And that would help us for a pretty good, a fair bit after twenty twenty-one. So, and it addresses the ability to do some, a little bit on salary enhancements to where we're least competitive over that time period. So the notion of talking about facility piece is really part of a larger kind of budget and salary plan that we put together that we think we can execute moving forward. I'll try to answer questions.
I don't know, actually, that I have questions, I guess...
What you're doing right now is kind of laying out a big picture strategy looking forward. And getting to twenty twenty-two without a levy increase, being able to take advantage of paying off a large chunk of our debt at that point that lowers our payments about ninety percent, ask the community to keep that with no increase and utilize it to keep improving things and keep improving the district, in a nutshell.
Correct.
I think it's nice to see a longer-term projection.
Actually, I think that's very helpful. I think we've been asking for that for a while, and I think you guys have put together a nice map of what needs to be done, generally speaking.
The budget document goes to, out to FY twenty-one, and then we've got some internal stuff that goes out way, way longer, but, I mean, the error that far out is just so significant. But we had some big picture items kind of out that far.
You mentioned if it's possible to conclude these leases. I mean, once they're rubbed there, why wouldn't it be?
We think we should be able to, but we don't know if there are rules on the lease might prohibit this from it.
Okay.
Get penalized for paying.
Right, okay, I get it.
Well, I like this because it is working within what we already have. Of course, to, obviously, the easiest route is to go out and ask for more money. That's always the easiest route to go, not that it guarantees that it's going to happen, but it also...
It's being able to work with what we have and take care of a lot of the needs that have been avoided in the district for a very long time.
Very long.
So it's nice to see that there's a plan and there is a plan to pay for it as well that doesn't revolve around tax increases, so.
Well, relative to the strategic plan, we go back to that. We knew that it was eighty-four cents, I believe, to be able to achieve the goals and objectives that were outlined at that point in time. Obviously, those things will probably change over time. This affords us, if everything aligns right, the possibility to ask for a levy transfer versus in addition to fulfill the rest of the eighty-four cents, if you will. This actually takes us, at least puts us in the vicinity, if not a little over, just depending upon what happens if, again, the moon and the stars align. So I feel better about that than additional, you know, on time. It's kind of nice to be able to, what do we currently have that we might be able to repurpose, so to speak? But repurpose it so we're meeting the goals and objectives for facilities, et cetera. Obviously, academics falls in there, too, I would hope, for the district.
There's got to be an ask at some point in the future.
Right.
And at least where I sit today, this pushes that off further.
Right.
That's a good thing. Any other questions? Okay.
Will we get a hard copy of that page right here? I don't see it on there.
Ours ends.
Yeah, we just put that together yesterday. We just finalized all that yesterday. Actually, that is going to go into and over the, that kind of, that one that's in the boardroom that's got, that's got what we're doing year by year across several dimensions. We've got this information put into that. So the plan is that in July, when we talk about the next year, that we'll have that then. So we'll have it big, too.
Could you just drop it in an email?
Oh, maybe.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to our consider policy revisions.
Pass along, or is making a recommendation to pass these five policies in front of you tonight. I'm sure there'll be some questions, so we can start in order, if you want to, with IKC, maybe?
Which is the GBAA.
Sure.
Because that was one that, you know, we said we were going to.
Resend and.
Resend and do all of that, so that is what we are doing with this one.
The exact same language we had before.
Okay. Right.
Yes, ma'am.
So, that takes away what we had approved. We'll bring this one back and readopt this one into what we already had.
Correct.
So, nobody has to sell tickets on Friday nights?
Nope.
No.
Nope.
Do you want to get a motion for that one?
Are we gonna do them separately?
Probably so.
Yeah.
I live that we re, well, I guess we approved.
GBAA.
And I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion seven zero passes? Okay.
Okay.
Did you guys have questions about each of the other ones?
I do, and it's not gonna be popular with probably the board and the policy committee, but I was wondering if we could, and a few of us have tried to mull this over before tonight, um, before the meeting, and I'm just curious if there's some way that we can.
Which one are you looking at?
IKC.
IKC, okay, thank you.
If, I'm sorry, if there's some way that we can satisfy both sides of the coin here. We wanna do what's right by all of our students. Obviously, when you make a change, it, it always seems to trample on somebody, but I'm just wondering if there's not some way that we can please the ninety-nine and nine-tenths percent of the students that are involved in this policy change, okay? Now, I'll be the first to admit that I was all on board with the non-ranking from the get-go, but in the, in the duration, I've come to find out that it's, it's really upsetting to, as you could see by this evening's speakers, and it's really rocking the boat for some of them seriously. And if there's a way that we can circumvent their concerns and still follow through with what our main intention was, either by putting a process within the policy, or, or steps to follow through on a process that could help the students that are in the thick of it right now, and yet, you know, come up with our plan a little more gradually, I would like to discuss that.
Do you want to talk about what? And we have both of the principals here, and.
Yeah.
We have our group here.
We do, because we had a very long conversation in policy, and it was very beneficial for you guys to be there, and we definitely take you guys, thank you guys for taking your time that evening and then coming back again for us.
I think it's important to note, you know, we have heard a lot from the community. And students, and again, as I said earlier, we really appreciate that feedback. I think it's really important to have that dialogue. And as a policy committee, the, the comments in our Google Doc were very lengthy. One of the goals was to make sure that we addressed all of those questions, and I know we kept you all for some time that evening, and really kinda went through every aspect of the pros and cons of the change and the why now, and I, I think it's also important to really understand that we do have the students' best interest in the forefront of our discussions, and I heard that a few times, that we really weren't thinking about the students or putting the students first, and that's erroneous, actually. I feel like that I do put the students first in, in my thoughts about how we can best succeed as a district and as individual students, all students. As it was, it was noted that we really, we really need to highlight all of our students, not just certain populations. So, I think that, that is the way we approached it that evening, to really talk about how can we ensure that we are not hindering any student and that no student would be punished by said change. Now, I would agree, Jean, is there, I, I think, I think talking it out of how are we going to ensure that that's not going to happen? You know, what is in place to make sure that all of our students are gonna be able to be served by whatever their needs might be as they're applying to college, et cetera? The, I, I don't have time to change my class schedule in order to accommodate the change. That was a concern that we had heard the last time, and I posed that to the group, and that didn't seem to be an issue in the evening that we were having our policy meeting, so it might be helpful if we could have some clarity around a few of those big issues that, that have come up, that we've heard about, and at the same time entertain, is there a more gradual approach? What is the, the pros or the cons of starting now, et cetera? I think it would be helpful.
I think our initial intent was to benefit, was for the greater good.
Absolutely.
And as it turns out. There is a larger chunk of students that are being affected by the greater good not going their way than initially anticipated, and I think that there's gotta be some way that we can, you know, tweak this policy to make it beneficial for everyone, or almost everyone. Not, not everyone is ever gonna be happy, I, I'll tell you that right now. And, you know, according to Facebook this week, I should probably have dropped dead somewhere on the way here tonight, so, but we gotta do what's best for the kids, and, and we really want to, so, I don't know, maybe we can look at a, a method.
One of the conversations that we had had was with our class of two thousand eighteen and nineteen, we would still, our system still allows us.
To do ranking, ranking, right.
And provide that, and there was a big conversation around, you know, for two thousand eighteen, their ranking probably needs to be there, they're, they're in their last year.
Yes, yes.
So, we had a long, a long conversation around that, and we even talked about two thousand nineteen, if it was necessary for certain students with that, but then taking that gradual approach of trying to change that culture and going away from the ranking part of it.
That seems reasonable, I mean.
And I think the reason why we had talked about the underclassmen was because that would still give them time to adjust their schedules.
Adjust, plans.
Do the things that they wanted to do, maybe do something different if they wanna do it, but if not.
It's like the gentleman said, let them know what race they're running.
Right.
You know, I, I completely agree with that. Let them know from the get-go which race they're in.
So, the other, the other notion was to identify a consistent process, right, across both of our high schools, that when a student would need to know what their class rank was, we would be able to provide that and make, making sure that we have a process written.
Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that that would be request, that could be requested from the parent or the student. It would not have to come from the university or.
College institution.
College itself, so.
Right, and it would be consistent across the district, I think. I'm kinda stuck on that.
So.
Wanna make sure that happened.
Yes. So, do, do you foresee that there's some method that we can get this written into it to put something in the policy?
I would recommend that. Procedure.
Okay. But do we have to establish a procedure in the policy?
There's a couple ways, I've been getting into this whole policy thing, and you probably know this.
So, am I correct in hearing that this should go back to the policy committee for, to include a phase in?
I told you you weren't gonna like hearing from me.
I mean, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
I think so.
If that's what we're hearing, we can make that happen.
Okay.
That's what we're hearing?
That's what you're hearing.
Then, we can do that.
Okay.
So, we'll table this for our July eleventh meeting.
Is that our next policy committee?
Surprise.
I was, I was.
We can have, we can have phase-in language by then.
As long as we, I don't know if we're, if I'm speaking out of turn, but if as long as we're here, I'd like to hear from the administrators.
Absolutely.
Why the change? Why is this a good thing for all of the children in the district? I completely agree that we should phase this in to benefit, so that, I mean, whatever side the coin flips lands on, there's not a good answer here for the kids that it would benefit if we weren't ranking, and the kids that are losing that, so I agree, we need to discuss that, but I would like to hear as briefly as possible, so that we don't.
I think it would be good, because I think, I really wish we would've had our policy committee meeting on whether it would've been live, recorded, whatever it was, because I think our conversation that night would've greatly benefited all seven members to be able to hear that much detail and that much information. So, could one of you give us kind of a brief overview of why we're looking to go away from this?
Uh-oh, they're going like this.
They're all pointing.
No, I'm just, I'm just teasing.
Because there was a lot of research done. You guys, you guys did a lot of research.
Absolutely, yeah.
Sometime back, actually, this is not something that's just happened overnight. You all have been working on this and discussing for some time, weighing the pros and the cons, the benefits to the students, et cetera, and one of the things that we discussed at our policy meeting was the punitive piece, and, and there, there was none presented, so.
Right. So, specifically, you want me to go into how the conversation got started, or?
More, why, why does the change, sorry?
No, no, please.
Why will this change inevitably benefit all children and not hurt any children, basically, I think? So, so, I guess explaining, what kind of, what you explained to me a little bit.
So, the benefit, I suppose, of class rank in the past has been that certain scholarships or universities will ask for class rank, and if you're in a certain percentage of the class, usually in the top, can you, like, the top ten percent of the class, then you might qualify for certain scholarships, and it might influence admission at certain universities. A lot of those universities and scholarships have moved away from looking at class rank, because class rank can have significantly different meanings depending on what school it's coming from. So, for example, if you have five hundred kids in a graduating classes versus twenty kids in a graduating class, valedictorian means a very different thing. The disadvantages of class rank, especially in a school district like us, where we have a lot of opportunities for kids to get a really high GPA, we have twenty-three AP classes, for example, which is tied for the highest number of AP classes in St. Louis County with Ladoo, that you have a lot of kids who are achieving at a really high level, and so the difference between a kid who's in the top ten percent and the next kid down is like a point zero zero three one in, in their GPA.
So, more than ten percent of our graduates, recent graduates from OHS, were summa cum laude.
Which is terrific.
Which is like eighty, forty-something people.
So, those, those kids that weren't even the ten percent were still over a four-point oh GPA, so. Four-point one, actually, right? Because four-point one was last year. Yeah, so, well, or four-point, and I mean, you could be in the fifteenth percentile and still have a higher than a four-point oh GPA, though. So, even though you're not in that ten percent, right, for that scholarship, you still have over a four-point oh, because you've taken AP and you've gotten weighted grades.
But one of the universities only looking at the top ten percent.
Unless you don't report class rank, and then that university or scholarship will look at other information. That's why a lot of school districts have gotten rid of class rank, because that kid that has the four-point one but isn't in the top ten percent can now be looked at for that scholarship, because we don't report, report class rank anymore. So, that's where that disadvantage comes from, to reporting class rank, because that kid is no longer being penalized, because they had a lot of high-achieving kids in their class, and they're a high-achieving kid, too. So, that's, that's the advantage, and there's no disadvantage to the kids by getting rid of the class rank, because those kids in the top ten percent still have their impressive GPA. They still have that really impressive transcript to apply for those scholarships and for those colleges. So, that's kind of the, I don't know, the not, the advantage versus disadvantage, there's really not a disadvantage to not reporting the class rank.
Well, I, you know, I, it's true that perception is reality, and if they perceive that it's gonna damage their chances, it, it could cause some of them to just throw their hands up and go, what the heck, you know, why, why bother? And we certainly don't want that.
So, I guess that's the education piece, that they, we need to make sure they understand it's not gonna damage their chances, and in fact, it opens up more opportunities for all of those kids. I mean, and they're still talking about high-achieving kids, they're not talking about.
I get that, and they're driven, and.
One statistic that I thought was an interesting one, when you and I talked, was that honors classes, as we all know, in our district are not weighted, however, we still have twenty to twenty-five percent of our freshmen, correct? Taking honors classes, so these are kids that, that are not in, I mean, they're preparing themselves, as we hope they're preparing themselves. So, you know, chasing the GPA got used a lot, and I hope that wasn't something that I wrote one time, and I will never, ever post on Facebook again, for the record. I was just trying to clarify something, I was new, and I didn't even really, to be honest, understand the whole policy, you know, the policy committee and the policy this, but I don't think, I mean, I, we want our kids to obviously try as hard as possible. We don't want to ever deter that, and that's what, I guess that was my fear a little bit about doing away with class rank, but on the other hand, I agree that, I mean, you don't want kids killing each other, or giving, not taking the CAPS program because it's not weighted, or, you know, taking a class that would be pertinent to their goals in life because it's not weighted. That's where the shame would come in, and I know the group of students that are here that are talking are not doing that, but there are certainly kids that are doing that.
Okay, so, is there any way to appease both groups?
I suppose phasing it in, what you were talking about. I mean, at some point, a group is gonna have to get cut off if we're gonna implement the policy, so there, there's going to be a point.
But didn't you, didn't someone tell me that even with a non-ranking system, we can still produce the rank to any student we want?
Yeah, we can, we can give it to the kids.
Even if you start the policy, we still, our system already provides it. We've already said, and we made very clear for our class of two thousand eighteen and even nineteen, they wanna start working with the underclassmen as far as, you know, giving them some different opportunities with it. But for eighteen especially, we would provide that rank. They will have, if they need that for a scholarship, all they have to do is ask for it, the system provides it, we can print it out so they have it for their transcript.
Okay.
It is interesting, there's something that we learned about Mizzou. You're either classified as a ranking school or a non-ranking school, and I think it's for the automatic scholarships, correct me if I'm wrong, gets different ranking depending if you're non-ranking or ranking, and if we go non-ranking, it's a different situation that could possibly hurt a couple of kids from getting automatically accepted into the scholarships where they would have to be looked at closer. I forget the.
It, well, they don't rate on the automatic scholarships, they then, if you're, if you're a non-ranking school, then they, and this is only Mizzou, and that's the thing, I mean, you almost have to throw the chips in the air, see where they land, and then, because there's so many scholarships out there, and so many universities, and so many different systems, and, and different schools feeding into them, et cetera, but I mean, this is a far instance only. Their automatic scholarships, if you're a non-ranking school, if you're a ranking school, they look at the rank, if you're a non-ranking school, they look at the core curriculum you brought in, what the GPA is of that core, of the core, not of your entire.
So, they're only gonna take a subsection of grades, as opposed to the overall.
But we can't worry about what, I mean, we can worry about Mizzou, but there's a gazillion.
Why, why did we get rid of that?
Yeah, that, that's actually something I wanna talk about, too.
Why did we reduce it to four-point oh?
The intention there is if a kid gets straight A's and hasn't taken any weighted classes, they can earn a four-point oh, and so then be recognized. They, they've gotten straight A's, and they're recognized at the highest level. A student could take weighted grades, not get straight A's, and still get a four-point one, so it's not, I mean, the intention there was to give that opportunity to the kids who don't take any weighted classes, to still be able to achieve, because they got a straight A's.
It's making my head hurt.
Yeah, it, it's.
How much more difficult are AP-type classes than regular classes? I mean, I actually learned something here recently that there's like a homework. I mean, I actually learned something here recently that there's like a homework list that occurs over the summer before you start an AP class.
Right.
Kids are actually, they have to like read...
Yeah, there's a required summer work component for the AP courses. That's one of the reasons they're weighted at a higher level, because essentially, they require more work to earn an A than a regular level course.
And I tell you, it's interesting, as a board member, we all get some of these emails that start out with the terms idiot, or dumb, or something like that.
Oh, yeah, we get a lot of them.
One person, a parent, sent me an email with a spreadsheet in it that I absolutely love that. She figured out how to get to my heart. And what it came out to was three AP classes over four years, if you get straight A's, gets you to a 4.1. So, it's if you did an AP class sophomore, junior, and senior year, and you got straight A's through all of that, you would have that. And with a 4.1, we had 10% of our students achieve summa cum laude this year. I guess I kind of wonder, when we're looking at highest distinction, does three AP classes over four years kind of rank into that?
I don't know.
I can tell you, I looked at the data on all of our graduates from this year, and there wasn't a single student who had a 4.0 who had not taken weighted classes.
I would find that to be strange, quite frankly, but...
They, all the kids that achieved a 4.0 or higher had all taken weighted classes. I looked at all of their GPAs with the weight and all of the GPAs without, so that you could compare. And there wasn't a single kid who had a 4.0 or higher who had not taken a weighted class. So, if that helps.
It makes sense.
Yeah.
If you could achieve straight A's and you didn't take any AP classes, you really haven't...
Yeah, because those kids that get straight A's do take those higher level classes. So, I know that was the fear, like, kids were going to take a bunch of underwater basket weaving classes and get a 4.0, but that's not what happens, so.
I look for that class, it's not in there.
You can look at the practices across, you know, a number of districts, and some, just, it's simply a 4.0, regardless of your course load, much like a college.
Right.
Right? Or you've got folks who have these added thresholds of advanced on EOC, of a minimum ACT score, of a minimum number of AP classes, or not just that, but qualifying scores on AP classes, or engaged in a number of activities.
There's a lot of variables there.
Yes.
So, people design it in all kinds of different ways. But is it an academic honor, or is it an honor for participating in activities?
I perceive it as academic, myself, that's...
That's, therein lies the...
Yeah, Larry, Larry'd like to say something.
Finally, I woke up. From the conversation I've heard, it sounds to me that what the policy needs to talk about, the scope of the change and when it's going to be effective, what's needed, this is kind of an unusual case, but I think this is where we need to practice, that ties with the policy, that talks about the conditions you've outlined. You know, and what's the process that'll be used for rankings or for college requests? Because we've had this conversation a couple of times, and these are good points, but I think that's the way I'd approach it.
Well, I think what we'll do is prepare sets of sample language that the policy committee can play with.
Ah, yeah, that's great.
And, you know, you talk about the whole notion of, you know, you provide rank at some point, and you don't provide rank anymore. There are some school policies that specifically state that if you're asked for rank, you put a rank of zero and a class size of zero. So, that, I mean, that is specified in the policy. So, we'll put together a bunch of sample language pieces that the policy committee can take a look at.
Possibilities, thank you, and I'm sorry, I can't let it rest yet, but I just can't.
And then it can kind of cut and paste with that.
Thank you.
That would be great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, where were we?
All right, we still have...
ADF.
ADF, and the G policies.
Does anybody have any questions on ADF?
Uh-uh.
You, too. Hi, welcome back.
A little sidebar.
We're on ADF now, if you'd like to catch up.
Thank you.
We're at the end of the meeting.
All right.
Do you guys have any questions on ADF?
The district wellness program.
Can I get a motion to approve policy ADF?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
I didn't hear Larry's answer.
GCBDB?
GCBDB.
GCBDB.
Anybody have any questions on this one?
No.
No.
Can we do this one and the next one together?
Yeah.
The GDB, since they're...
Very similar.
Very similar, okay. Can I get a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve GDB, DB, and GCBDB. Is that, did I get that right?
Yes.
Yes, you did.
Seven seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, I'm going to go six zero because Larry's not responding.
Larry?
Okay.
Larry?
I hope he's put her on mute. Yes.
Okay, that was a yes.
Okay, all right, seven zero then.
Okay, see you in a little bit.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say one thing real quick? Just a thank you to all the students who spoke tonight. I attended a meeting in another district one time, one of their school board meetings, where essentially it just turned into a whole thing of people being mad and just going off on their school board and superintendent. Everybody here tonight did an awesome job, a great job of speaking, getting their points across all that, and I really appreciate it.
With a great deal of respect. Thank you very much.
So, thank you.
Who's got anything to bring, like, maybe, to people? I don't think a lot, I don't care what you're doing, there's nothing, everybody's game is someone's career, just shut people off.
That is true.
It does. Marshall?
Hi, Marshall. Did we wake you?
Hopefully, this will be quick and easy on this agenda item.
All right, I think it will.
This is something we do every year annually in June, and all it's really doing is just formal approval of our fund transfers and setting the budget to actual. So, really, I guess I'll open it up to questions, or else we won't...
Yes, but nothing has changed since two weeks ago when we did this, so, okay.
Well, this isn't the budget. This is not the budget. This is an annual thing that we do every June.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Where the board formally approves fund transfers.
Right.
Part of those, which are compliant with law. Like, we paid off our GO bond, and so we had to take the excess funds there and transfer that to the capital fund. That's state law to do that. So, it's approving all of our transfers and setting the budget to actual.
I'm sorry, I was jumping ahead.
Okay, you want to do it?
Yeah, I can do it. Move to approve the adjustments for the final budget to actual transfer from food service for capital projects, transfer from the general fund for Prop R capital projects, transfer from debt service fund after GO bonds were fully paid, and transfer from the general fund to eliminate negative teacher fund balances if necessary.
Also move to approve fund transfers and budget adjustments necessary to comply with state law and audit requirements, and to adjust the final budget to actual.
Second.
Seven seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Marshall.
Okay, moving on to our consider resolution on salary schedules.
You're back.
I have two more. Two in a row now. Okay, so we're asking the board to approve the salary schedule for next year, for the 17, 18 school year. Any questions at all?
And these salary schedules are classified.
Yes, classified, yeah.
It's both.
And there's a certified piece on there, too.
We put both of them in there, because we wanted to provide a little bit more clarity on exactly what was happening, especially with the additional individuals getting a second step, a little more clarity than what was kind of in the MOU, if you will.
There's 40 of those people.
So, we listed it specifically.
Can you briefly explain what those changes are, or what it covers?
The changes in the classified schedule?
Start with the certified.
Certified? Well, there were, in 1994, 95 school year, there were 40 people that are still employed with the district that were frozen. They're still employed with us, they've been frozen four times. So, part of the negotiations, we agreed to catch them up one step. Part of it's because their loyalty, they've been loyal to the district this long, and we felt that going back that far, they needed to be caught up one step.
Okay. Can you explain on classified, why you chose the positions you did to raise the base? Kind of what was your, how did you go through, what was your process for determining it?
Well, we looked at neighboring districts, and then we looked at Wentzville, which is not a neighboring district, but demographically, they're very similar to us. Reason why we looked at neighboring districts is a couple of conferences I attended this year, other districts nationwide are looking at revisiting their classified schedule and restructuring it. So, all the research shows that most of your classified employees, in fact, 78% of them of our classified employees, out of 530, 417, live in our district. So, not too many of them are going to go to Pattonville or any place like that to take a position. Generally, they'll stay close by. So, we looked at the neighboring districts, then we looked at the highest paid position in the district, and we looked where we fell. And the goal wasn't necessarily to be number one. The goal wasn't necessarily to be number one, the goal was to be competitive and maybe close that gap a little bit. Then also, we looked at, not just the gap, but we looked at positions that were difficult to fill. Historically, in the last few years, custodians, bus drivers, nurses, our business department, those areas have been the most difficult to fill. And it's how we made the decision to bring those up with the allotted money that we're allowed.
And I notice we still have a lot of job openings at this point, do we not, or...
In the classified, yes, ma'am.
Yes. So, pass the word around, folks. We've got people looking for jobs. Tell them to get on our website.
Yeah, I appreciate seeing all of the classified positions that you put out there in the comparisons. And one thing that I saw, which is sad and scary all at the same time, is that it's another area where we're not competitive compensation-wise.
Yes, sir.
Across the district, we're in that situation, so...
And I think it's wonderful that just because we have 417 out of 430 live within the, you know, boundaries of our district, we don't assume they're going to stay here because they live close.
Correct.
And that's kudos to us for, you know, bumping up their salary to be competitive, so...
And I don't, you know, out of the 530 employees and the 417 that live here, I don't know if that's common in other districts or not. I think it's kind of unique. I grew up here all my life and lived here until a few years, so a lot of people, a lot of people that work here live in the community still.
Yep, good deal.
It's another step to get closer.
Right. Well, in the information regarding the amount of years of service and how low they are, it shows how much turnover there is because of, again, not only our teacher salaries not being competitive, but our classified hasn't been as well, so...
I can speak to the turnover, if you allow me for a second. We looked at turnover the first five years of employment. For transportation, 51% of our employees have been here five years or less. Facilities, 71% of our custodians have been here five years or less. Nurses, 47%. And our business department, 77% have been here fewer than five years or less.
Wow, 77.
So, high turnover.
So, hopefully, this'll start to help.
Kind of like what we did with the teacher salary, we want to attract and retain. By making these adjustments, hopefully, we can do that.
Hopefully.
And that goes back to the other conversation that we were having earlier, too, so...
These adjustments don't, I mean, if you look at the finals of what they're suggesting, it doesn't put us actually into the central range on any of these, so...
There's movement, but it's a baby step.
But hey, we got $8 million from Prop R, right? We should be able to do all of this stuff.
I wish.
Just kidding, folks, just kidding.
Okay. Is there anything else?
No, it's a step in the right direction.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution on the 2017, 2018 salary schedule as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Larry's not on yet. Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Sorry, I'm back, wine dropped.
His wine dropped.
Larry?
Did you really just say that?
Yes.
You're on speaker.
I know that. I just, the line just dropped, I had to reestablish.
Oh, the line dropped. We thought you said your wine dropped.
No, I'm sitting here with a cup of coffee, thank you very much.
I wondered why you guys were talking about that.
Oh, dear.
Why do these words always seem to take this turn? Okay.
Okay, then, all righty.
Thank you. Now, we will move on to consider our teacher MOU for the 2017, 18 school year. Okay. Does anybody have any questions about it? Everybody good?
Well, it's everything we discussed, so...
I think it's pretty straightforward.
We're very happy to have come to an agreement on that.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, we're very happy.
Has it been voted on?
Yes, yeah, they ratified.
Okay.
So, our teachers are good to go for another year?
Yes, ma'am.
Good.
Do you know what the percentage was?
I do not, no.
66%.
Six, Matt was on the negotiation team.
Okay.
66?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve the teacher MOU for the 2017, 2018 school year.
Second. Oh, go ahead, Kevin.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark.
All right. Marshall, again. I will restate my question again. Nothing has changed from your last...
Nothing has changed.
Twenty weeks ago.
Just rehearsal earlier.
Yeah, it was a rehearsal.
I mean, I know everybody loves for you to stand up there for 30 minutes, going over all of this stuff.
No.
No, nothing has changed from the last meeting, so are there any questions?
Okay. What questions do we have? Get started.
I think all of mine were answered with the previously submitted questions, so I think...
Do you want to kind of touch base with those?
Yeah.
Because the thing, just so everybody has a very clear understanding about what we do, we get our eboards the same time everybody else gets them, they go online about a week ahead of time. From there, what we do is we usually, over the weekend, we go through, and then we submit questions. Those questions are then sent to all the right people, and all those answers come back. So, sometimes when it seems like we're not having a whole lot of a conversation, it's because we've previously asked these questions, so we have the answers. But I think, especially when we're talking about our budget, if you've asked questions, I think it'd be a good idea to share...
Okay, well, I'll just go over the questions and answers that we went through prior to this meeting tonight. One of the questions, well, this is a personal comment. Even with the strategic decision to spend an additional $450,000 a year for this effort, that budget we are adopting tonight projects a surplus for 2017, 2018. Just because we adjusted our funding priorities, I want to compliment the administration and the CFO for their work resulting in a projected budget that embraced those changes. Nice touch with the mosaic estimate slash actual page. That would be the estimated expenses and the actual expenses. The executive summary calls our district needing to determine where we want to be on employee compensation and develop the plans to get there. Are there already plans to perform a study that gathers data about surrounding and comparison district compensations and other pertinent data? If so, do you have thoughts on periodic updates to the BOE? And the answer to that was see prior responses. Also, in the executive summary, under capital projects, there's a statement saying we use $2.3 million of general funds to pay for capital. Does this include Prop R or Prop A funds? Both of these props have portions that were dedicated for capital, and it could be misleading Both of these props have portions that were dedicated for capital and it could be misleading practically, even if not by definition, to make this statement if that is true.
Let me answer this one.
Go ahead.
Rather than reading.
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you.
On this one in particular, because this one's kind of a little more complicated. So in Prop R, we said that we would annually spend one point seven five million for capital. And there are two ways to operationalize that. One is through the transfer that you just authorized by motion. The other one is by placing roughly ten or eleven cents in the capital projects fund that just sends that money straight into the capital projects fund rather than doing the transfer.
Right.
So after Prop R passed and we were first, we were developing that first budget with these funds, the finance committee had a lengthy discussion of which methodology to go with. And the finance committee chose the transfer methodology. So while you could say that we're making this transfer away from operations, which is accurate, I can also say that we can get it into there another way that didn't account for a transfer. The end result is the same, it's the mechanism in which we get it.
Shortest point between A and B.
We chose to do it through a transfer mechanism, which to some extent gives this illusion that we're taking away from operating funds when in fact, we could just channel it straight there. The end result is the same. To some extent, it's a little bit of your philosophy of school finance and it's a little bit of semantics, but the end result is the same. We're spending what we said we were going to do from Prop R.
Thank you for that thorough answer.
Yeah. And I, but, and I think that's probably the most important piece of that is that that transfer is what we said out of Prop R.
And does not technically take funds.
Would be spent, and it's just how we have to move it from operations to capital.
But it was always dedicated for capital.
Correct.
For day one, it's just the mechanism.
Correct.
Right.
Yes.
Good. So.
All right.
I move to.
So a couple of questions.
Go.
You knew that was coming. I just want to put a few things on the record vocally. Is, this thing, is our budget currently saying that we have an overall surplus forecasted through the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school year in the total column?
An overall surplus? In the operating or total?
Total.
Because that's sort of two different things, really.
Total is correct, but the operating is different. So there's an operating deficit in, or, I'm sorry. We have, if I go back, you can, here, ah, can hit, see here that we anticipate operating surpluses for next year and the school, next, for the next school year and the school year after. After, starting in the nineteen twenty year, we do see an overall operations deficit. But because of the way that our, we've got our capital plan currently is this build spend, build spend to do the big projects. So although we're deficit spending in nineteen twenty in operations and we're deficit spending in debt, we are building a surplus in capital for a bigger, to handle a bigger project down the road.
So we're making a choice within our four budgets. So it's like if I got groceries, rent, eating out, sort of a thing, I may be going over here, but overall, my revenue is exceeding my planned expenditures for all of the years through twenty twenty-one.
Well, this goes back to the million seven fifty issue. So if you go and you look at the five years, there's a cash flow summary page in there and it shows, so as Dr. Gaines said, once you get to fiscal year twenty, the overall total budget shows a one hundred and twenty thousand dollar excess. But the operating is a two hundred and forty one thousand dollar deficit.
Because of that.
Yeah, and then next year's nine hundred and thirty seven thousand dollar deficit on operating and a hundred and fifty three thousand total budget. And it just depends on if you're going to transfer that money or not.
Right. So within that, you have a deficit, but overall, we have more revenue planned, we think forecasted coming in than we have expenditures overall for the year, right?
Not, well, overall, yes.
Okay.
But the debt piece is the tricky part because if we go out to two thousand and twenty-one, if you took out, because, because we're building balances in the debt fund in two thousand and twenty-one to help pay that debt through two thousand and twenty-nine. So if you take that piece out, the remainder of the budget is a deficit.
If we took out that singular piece.
If you take out, if you take out that singular piece on that debt. So to look at the total is nice, but you've got to break it into the pieces because the way that we've got capital is this notion that in order to fund, you know, Berkeley's a two point seven million dollar project, and that's not the only project we're doing. But in order to do that, we had to build up some money so that we could do that big one.
Right.
So we've got that buildup and then we've got a big spend later on.
Right.
So in debt, what we're trying to do is to build up so that we can move that, those pennies in two thousand and twenty-one over into two thousand and twenty-two. And we all need a little bit of tax rate to fund the, through two thousand and twenty-nine rather than continuing to have that high tax rate because the payments go down then and we've got, we'll still have cash in that account and then we'll just need to add a little bit more to run us out through two thousand and twenty-nine.
Okay.
So that, blurring the lines between total budget, but looking at the individual budget, the individual pieces is really important, especially on the capital and the debt side because those are treated so weirdly.
Yeah.
And then, of course, the operations side, you gotta look at that, too.
And then the two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two shift is nine point four million in debt payments two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two becomes nine hundred and forty thousand, so that's the potential transfer.
Yeah, I mean, we're looking at being able to drop forty-seven cents.
That just answered my question, too, that we're going to be reducing debt or eliminating debt in years prior to that, which is going to alter a lot of things as well, so.
It puts us in a pretty decent shift.
Yeah, yeah.
Last question. Are our cash, and I know the answer to this already, I've been thinking about it. Are our cash reserves still forecasted to be over twenty-five percent?
Correct.
Okay.
And I did check with the chairman of the finance committee, Mark Henson, and his, his understanding, his, his belief in the policy is the same in that it's a guideline and it's not, it's not a hard twenty-five point oh percent. If you're twenty-five point one percent, you're in non-compliance. It's, it's not a concrete thing. So that's something that you guys may want to have more, you know, more reporting on by the finance committee or open this up to, you know, propose different language to make it more clear of what the intent is. But the intent from the finance committee and myself is not that it's a concrete twenty-five point oh.
That was the language issue, if I recall.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have a policy that says seventeen to twenty-five.
Yes. With a word that was a problem based on interpretation of the word.
Yeah, and this is something that I really think if we're going to set up for future years, we have to start creating the culture that policy is not a suggestion, policy is followed. Procedures are made to align with policy to create standard procedures and standard processes because that's the way we start to become a much better district when things are done consistently, standardized, constantly improving. And that starts, I believe, with good, consistent policy that's followed.
And worded correctly.
So that's a hard line for me, and I think as a board, we need to start going down that road.
Well, it's.
Now, if we don't end up pushing that tonight, I think we need to revisit that policy through the policy committee.
Well, I think that's what, maybe what we do is we have a conversation with the finance committee.
Well, so Marshall and I have not had this conversation, so I'll surprise him with that.
Surprise, Marshall.
So you can, we can effectuate that at the end of next fiscal year through a transfer to hit that on twenty-five.
Yes.
We can do that.
Definitely could, yeah. It's actually a very easy solution to do it that way.
That, that is the cleanest, easiest way to do that. It gives some, it makes, it can make the budget look weird overall by, by doing that, but that effectuates that notion. And I have used that strategy in the past.
And that keeps us within our policy.
To do that kind of thing, so.
So what we want to say is that it never exceeds twenty-five percent.
We can do that, but you cannot overlook the need for the salary stuff. And in the, in the executive summary piece where it talks about we need to identify the salary targets.
We need to do all of that, and I'm not trying to say that we shouldn't do all of that.
I'm not saying do it, I'm saying that's how you can get to that.
Because if we make that kind of a transfer, it is detrimental to fixing the salary problem, and we need to understand that. Because you're going to need that money.
Well, I, I mean, here's my. I, I guess here's my over, overall. If, if, if that is something that the board really, as a board, wants us to concentrate on as we look at the FY nineteen budget and finishing up FY eighteen, then we can start to target closer to using twenty-five as, I don't want to say a hard ceiling, but stay within, you know, I mean, if you look at, look at these, I mean, you know, we're going to be within two per, two percent of it, which seems kind of like a, a big number. But that, if the board wants that to be a focus, then we can begin to look at that conceptually as we begin to work on the FY nineteen instead of trying to figure out how do we do that with the FY eighteen.
And please understand, I'm not against this plan at all. And I see how this all works where budget now and then, or the surplus and then coming down and the benefits to that. It really does come down to, I think we need this culture of policy's not a suggestion, policy drives procedure, drives standard process, which I know you're on board with the standard process part. I think we need to definitely be focused on that way. So either this has to change or policy has to change, that policy in particular and how that's worded. And if it comes down to twenty-five percent's the target, it can go above. If you have a spend down goal over some number of years, you know, that might be a way to do it. There's numerous ways this could go about. You made a suggestion to get us to twenty-five percent, it is very easy to do and would be fine, as far as I'm concerned.
I mean, it's easy to do, it has other impacts. But the challenge with going in down to a hard target, because I experienced this, is I hit the hard target and then because we made adjustments when we hit the hard target, we, we ricocheted right back up. So then it was, okay, how do, how do we continue to adjust to keep it in a, in a narrow range and not have this?
I can see where that would be almost impossible.
This rock skipping thing, I mean, it can be done, but I mean, it takes a significant amount of.
Planning.
Planning to, to do around that and not, you know, and, and forecasting and, you know, but, I, I mean, we could, so the, the top line is what, the top two lines really from FY twenty-one over to the left are what is in the budget document. All that other stuff below it is new stuff that will impact all that stuff above to some extent.
Right.
I think we probably ought to have the policy sent to the committee, let the committee have that conversation because one of the things that Mark has started doing now is inviting in those people that would help with that. So maybe we have Mark Henson come in, we'd be able to have that conversation, same as we did with the principals and Mrs. Inc. and all of that for class rank. And then we can get, you know, a little bit better idea and maybe get some better wording around it. Because again, if we're going to follow policy, policy can't be interpreted to different, by different meanings to different people.
Yes.
And this one clearly does, just even with the seven of us, the way that reads. So that lets us know right there that we need to work on that language itself and have it state exactly what we want it to mean. And then it's not, you can't interpret it to mean anything but what it actually says, so.
I thought that was the outcome of our last meeting, was that we were going to revisit the language of the policy.
I thought so as well.
So, so, I mean, I agree, I think that that's necessary. I appreciate that there might be some options based on many variables of getting to the twenty-five percent and being able to do some kind of transfer that helps us feel better about our decision-making as it aligns with policy, because I know we had that discussion, too, that we would be voting on something that didn't necessarily align with what our current policy states. So it's nice to know that there are other options, but also appreciated, as you've noted, Marshall, that there are lots of variables that can shift things around and we need to be wise about that.
Right, yeah.
I think this year, it would be detrimental to make that transfer to get down to twenty-five percent until we fully understand how we're going to resolve the salary issue and what numbers are needed to resolve the salary issue. I'm not saying that wouldn't be in the end a viable option, but I'm not sure that it would be. It might be detrimental depending on what we find with what we need to do on salaries.
Fine, I think that what you proposed was we need to wait and see.
Right.
What things look like whenever we get to the finish line. And in the interim, we can perhaps have the finance committee enlighten us on the, the meaning of the term as it is currently written and what options there might be for better language with regard to clarity on the policy itself.
Well, and I think that they would be good to give us that, what, what is that fluid on both ends? You know, what, you know, we rely on them to give us data, to give us information. So to get their insight as far as, you know, I mean, we know with the budget, it never is going to be exact. So to try to make that a hard twenty-five percent without doing some sort of a transfer or something like that, chances are, we're not, you're not going to be able to budget down to make sure we're at twenty-five percent all the time. So the question then becomes, what, what does the, as the finance committee, what do they feel is good or bad on either end of that? Because we also don't want to go too low either, so.
We have a lower limit of seventeen.
Yeah.
In the same policy.
And, and I always thought that was.
It still has the same word.
I always thought that was a.
That means two different things to us.
If we were projecting below seventeen, I'd be fighting that, too.
That's not, you keep wanting to argue this and we're all on the same page.
Yeah, we're all on the same page. We're all on the same page.
Right, we're on the same page with it. We're saying it, it needs more clear language around it. That way, it takes that interpretation out of it. I think we're all saying the exact same thing.
So are we okay with the budget for this year?
Yes.
Thank you.
And he's still there.
So in that case, uh.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to vote on that one.
Huh?
So we'll find out.
Yeah, okay, so, or is it?
We already know how this is going.
Yeah.
Should I move?
Yeah.
Yep, go ahead.
All right, I move to approve the Melville School District budget for the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year. Our year.
Second.
Two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, period.
Larry seconds?
Larry second.
All those in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
You're not.
Opposed? Motion carries five two.
She really spoke. She did.
It's on record.
She called it before.
All right. Moving on to our sale of property at fifty-nine fifty Telegraph Road. All right. Where to start? Okay, so when we left off at the last meeting, we had tried to get the attorney on the phone to clear up some language around if the, if everything didn't go through, because we are just the very minimum first step of what they have to do after this. They then go to counting, planning and zoning, they have to get approved for all of that. Our big thing was wanting to make sure that if we went through with this, that they didn't get everything, that they couldn't, they didn't then own the property and could turn around and sell it to somebody else, that the property would just come back to us, their money would go back to them, and that's how it would be. So that language was cleared up with our attorney. Do you guys have any questions around what he cleared up or what he put in there?
I think you just described it pretty well. If for some reason the sale doesn't, if for some reason they cannot build a store, the sale does not occur.
They don't need it.
And I guess there's, this is more of a statement, I thought what Rochelle said was, was really true. She said, "We're not elected to work on bringing commerce to Oakville," and she's right. That is not part of our charter. Our charter is the school system, academics, kids, all of those things. And if we were to get into the commerce part, quite frankly, we'd be going beyond what we should be. What we are simply looking at is selling a piece of property based on a number of factors of whether we think we would ever use it, build on it, what we would get for it strategically, what we could do with that somewhere else without having to take tax money or something else in order to do it. And that's really what we're, we're looking at. So we get into this whole thing of there is going to be a ton of permitting that has to go through. What one person spoke about with that back area flooding, one of the areas why that's difficult to build in is going to. difficult to build in is going to have to be taken care of, it is going to go through MSD, not us, but the other MSD, they are going to have to approve that. Stormwater discharge is going to have to be figured out, there is going to be a, a traffic study done that's going to have to pass, it's going to have to get through the county council, all of them deal with permitting, all of them deal with zoning, commerce, all of that stuff, really not our purview. So the fact that if any of that fails, nothing happens, I think that's extremely important because getting into all of that is not our, our area, it simply comes down to voting on, would we approve this sale for them to go there?
Well, and I think at that point, it gives the community the opportunity to decide if they want an Aldi's there or not.
Yes.
Because they, I mean, we've seen, and there are things going on even right now, of businesses going, wanting to go somewhere and the county council will hold it up for whatever reason. So selling the property doesn't guarantee that an Aldi will be built there.
Or anything.
Or anything, you know, and I, I think a lot of the conversation gets lost around the additional property that they're also buying, which is where the house sits, right up next to Telegraph. And I can't see that far back.
Do you need a pointer?
Yeah, I'm good.
Who's got their laser light on?
Well, you can't see the house right now with the way it sits.
You got your laser light?
Kevin's got his laser light.
Okay, hold on, Kevin's got his laser light.
The house is covered up.
There, who's good.
There we go.
The house on the.
Look at you.
Yeah, there's a house that would sit in here.
Right.
Right now. So they're, they acquire that piece of property too, ours is just this little L piece right here.
And they haven't done that yet?
No, they're in the process, I think, if not already acquired, it's under contract.
Okay.
And there was also a conversation about, is 800,000, 815,000 a good price for 1.28 acres? And we had been questioned if, you know, did we have anybody do a land study, a value, this or that? We have our attorney, or not our attorney, sorry, do you know? We have our real estate expert that has done that for us, he has looked into that, he gave us a range when we were looking at this, so that was also something else that we took into effect whenever we set the price, because we knew what, we knew absolutely bottom line, we will not go below this, and here's a high price start here. It's also been mentioned that they're offering us less money now for what they're offering to, they're offering less now than they were before. They're also asking for less land, it is not the same amount that it was eight years ago, I guess, when they.
Was there ever an offer at that point?
I don't.
Not on Aldi's part? My understanding was that there had net, that previously, that there had only been a number thrown out by the district, that Aldi had never responded to that number.
I don't remember what the.
Larry?
That was my understanding.
Larry? Oh, Larry.
Yeah, yes.
Do you remember when Aldi's first approached the district, I guess eight, 10 years ago, whenever that was?
I would say it was in the six, six to eight, eight-year range.
Okay, um, do you know what the.
Offer was.
Offer was, and did Aldi's ever accept the offer?
I'm not aware that we ever got to an actual contract, I could be wrong, because I know there were other members of the board that were much, much more involved, we have, you know, we had a, had a small committee to take a look at it.
Do you remember, Mary?
I can't, I can't quote you a number because I don't remember it.
Oh.
But I don't know that we got to a contract stage with them.
Okay, but do you know what, do you happen to recall the size of the land or what even numbers were even talked about?
No, I don't, but I do remember that the building had a different orientation, and I think because of that, it was going to be a, a much deeper piece of land. I can't tell you if it was two acres or 175 or whatever the case might be.
Okay. All right, unfortunately, I don't know.
Yeah, it's irrelevant, really, it's, you know, it's a different situation completely from what I understand, the, the amount of property, the amount of money, the, you know, the, the location of the property that's being questioned, everything is different.
Do they need more clarifications or?
What about safety? I mean, that just continues to come up with regard to the SRO presence or not, they're not there now, right, with after-school activities and community use of the property. So I don't know if we want to talk about, I mean, I know safety's been a big.
The community use of property is ongoing now as it is, so I don't, don't know what that one is.
So how are they, I mean, I wasn't in on all of these conversations, so I don't totally understand still, how, are they widening? When you keep saying they're, they have to yield, their traffic has to yield to school traffic.
So this, this drive, this drive is being widened.
Yeah, okay.
To create this turn lane into Aldi's. And that, there's an existing driveway roughly about right here, out of that house.
Right.
I mean, I don't know exactly where it is, but, but there is an existing, there's an existing driveway there.
Um, so, and then at the last meeting, I had said about putting in a sidewalk perhaps on the south side of the driveway so that it would actually be safer for students to walk down to Telegraph because they would have a sidewalk to walk on rather than walking in the road, so that's something that.
Right, but then we need to do the same thing on the north side of it because if they are going to.
Then they have to cross traffic.
If they're going to make a right and go north on Telegraph, then they're going to have to cross through that light and through all of that traffic.
We, I believe last time we were asked if we know things about, we can talk about the traffic aspect, and we can talk about Telegraph. So on Telegraph at one end, traffic counts are about 44,500 cars a day. Now that's close to the 255 entrance ramp, right? So at the other end of Telegraph, closer to where it hits 67, 61, 67, that number drops to 11,000. So a lot of people drop off along the way. Aldi's business model calls for about 700 vehicles in that lot a day, which is about over 12 hours, one a minute. So that's what we're talking roughly about, is one vehicle a minute going in and out additional to what we'll currently be there, just because we've been asked if we've done any of the data, so that's kind of what it looks like.
And there were also conversations about how many accidents have been, have been there. I even reached out to the Highway Patrol today, and they have a STAR program on their website where you can actually go in and put a timeframe, because I, actually, I called the county first, asked them, and they said all of their reports go to the Highway Patrol. So talked to them, went through the STAR program on the Missouri Highway Patrol's website, and within that amount of area within, in front of the school, you know, a little bit north and south, there had not been any specific accidents that had been reported there. Now, if somebody had a fender bender, didn't have, you know, didn't have enough damage to ride something, I'm not saying that nothing has ever happened there, but I'm saying that as far as reported by a police officer, there have not been any situations right there.
I think another concern was that we kind of rushed into this, and I think what people don't realize is that this has been going on now for about 18 months, I think, or correct me if I'm wrong, but more than that. And it, it wasn't something that we, you know, that we took lightly. I mean, at first, I kept reminding all these people that they're not making any more ground, they're not making any more ground, you know, we got to be careful, they're, they're not making any more ground, and, and then it became absolutely clear to me that this 1.28 acres was not going to serve any good purpose for our school district, and to try to do anything with it for us, the expense would far outweigh the benefit. I can't imagine anything our district could do with that piece of ground now or in the future. And on the flip side of the coin, what could we do with the money that we could potentially make from the sale of this property? Gosh, you look around the district and, and you can count, I, I don't have enough fingers and toes to figure out where we could use the, the funds from this to help benefit our students and teachers in, in ways with, you know, ease of exit and entry from their schools, so, you know, there's, either way, it's going to be, you know.
It's, I know, and I mean, I, I think we've all received emails, and I think I have, today alone, I've received four that are supporting it, I've received two that are not, and that's pretty, been pretty consistent throughout. So I think it, it's all based on who you ask, you know, and much like any decision that's ever made, you're going to have people that are going to be happy about it, and you're going to have people that are not, our big thing is to make sure that we've taken the safety concerns in, if it goes through, and that, that is a big if, and I think you guys all know what I'm talking about, it's going to get through a lot more red tape than us.
A lot more. Not even just red tape, but the permitting is really, you know, engineering studies and making sure that.
Right.
It's not going to push stormwater off to someone else and cause issues, so.
Yeah.
It's valid stuff that it's going to have to go through to verify that that's the right thing to do, and then there's red tape beyond that.
Right, and I would think that once the, you know, this isn't something we're going to, they're not going to have Aldi's built by the time we start school in a month and a half.
Maybe even next year.
I know, and maybe not even next year. But, you know, the thing about what we do is we will adjust, if we see that there is anything going on, of course, we're going to make sure that we adjust for that. If we see that traffic is a problem, if we need to bring somebody to come out in direct traffic, we will do that. Our goal is never to put any of our kids in harm's way, never.
Or to make Telegraph Road more miserable than it already is.
No, the cars are already there, I mean, they're, they're going to be there whether they're there or not.
Mm-hmm.
700 cars, by the way, two entrances.
700 will stop along the way, according to your data.
According, according to the data.
Ah.
Anyways, I'm going to make a motion to approve the contract for the sale of the property approximately 1.28 acres at 5950 Telegraph Road to Aldi Inc. I think we have to do this in two motions.
Correct.
Is there a second on the first motion?
A second?
Second.
Oh, let, let Larry have it, so he's feeling a little neglected, I think, so let Larry have it.
Who?
Larry, you got the second.
Larry, you have the second, so.
Okay, you talked me into it.
Okay.
Any more discussion?
Is there any, Larry, do you have anything that you want to add?
No, I think, I have some comments written here, but I think what you've really touched on are the three, three key pieces, and, and most of you know that I was pretty, pretty skeptical of this back, way back from when, but I, I believe we have done our due diligence. I think with the data we've been able to get in terms of traffic flows and estimations, with the best information we had, and I think with the opportunity to use this to solve some other problems, I, I support this.
Okay. Anybody have any after, anything else? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six, one. Then we need the motion for the second part.
I make a motion to authorize the board president, Samantha Stormer, to sign and execute the contract with Aldi Inc.
And I will second that as well.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries six, one. All right. That is it, we didn't have anybody for second period of patron comments, so Lisa, if you could take and put us into closed session, please.
I move to enter a closed session meeting for the purpose of reading of minutes of previous minutes and corrections and approval of same and other items under Missouri Vice Statute 610.021, subsections one to 21, and 610.022, subsections one to six, legal action causes or actions of litigation, statute 610.0211, and individually identifiable personal records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, statute 610.02113.
Second.
Jamie seconds?
Kevin.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Gene.
Aye.
Peggy.
Aye.
Larry, he can't, right?
No.
Sam.
Yeah, aye.
Lisa, yes.
Good night, Larry.
Okay, good night, Larry.
Bye, Larry.
Go back to your wine.
Larry?
Larry?
Did you drop your wine again?
Yes.
You did.
All right, we're, we're getting ready to move to close, do you want me to call you back?